At 5:15 and acknowledge our meeting status. Members of the public may directly address the board by attending our in-person meetings and submitting a public comment card. We do not take public comment through our online platform and cannot guarantee online streaming if the platform malfunctions for any reason. Members of the public are encouraged to share their thoughts and concerns with me, the Board President, at sequin@petk12.org if you are not able to attend in person. And seeing no public, I will assume we have no comments from the public on closed session items and adjourn us to closed session until six o'clock. All right, I'm going to reconvene this meeting at 6:01 PM and I will ask trustee Webster to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, and we're going to move into a public hearing and I have to gavel again, sorry y'all. All right, the public hearing is officially open on contract reopeners with CSEA and the districts. Jason, can you tell us what the public hearing is for?
This is an opportunity for the public to make any comments on the proposed negotiations and the areas of negotiation that are proposed by CSCA and by the district.
If anyone has any comments on these contract reopeners, please fill out a public comment card and bring it over to Esmeralda. Seeing no one charging the stage, I'm going to close the public hearing. Always a delight. And now, we have, no action was taken in closed session, so we'll move on to our special recognitions, reports, and presentations, starting with our introduction of the new Director of Budget and Accounting.
All right, thank you. I'd like to invite Helen Miller to come right up to the front right here. Sorry Helen, I didn't give you that heads up, did I? You don't have to talk, you just, yeah, yes, absolutely. Danny's taking notes in the back because he's next, right? So, um, so we're delighted to introduce Helen Miller as the new Director of Budget and Accounting for Petaluma City Schools. Helen brings a wealth of experience and a deep commitment to education, making her a great addition to PCS. Helen began her career as an instructional assistant in yard duty staff at Guernville School, later transitioning into payroll and accounts payable. After her time in Guernville, she joined Santa Rosa City Schools as a budget technician and further honed her expertise at Sonoma Valley as a business manager, before returning to Santa Rosa City as the district accountant. In two, in 2023, Helen earned her CBO, Chief Business Official Certificate from CASBO, marking a significant accomplishment in her professional development. Helen's diverse background in school finance operations has prepared her well for this new role at Petaluma City Schools. We have no doubt that her experience and positive attitude will help her succeed and thrive. On a personal note, Helen grew up in Cloverdale where both her parents were teachers. She's also a proud mother of a son who shares a special connection to her career. His birthday is on the same day that Helen began working with us at Petaluma. Please join, please join me in giving Helen a warm welcome. We look forward to seeing the great work she will accomplish here.
Thank you. I, I look forward to getting to know everybody more and working here for a long time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. And then with that, we'll move on to introduction of our new Assistant Principal of Adult Education.
And we'd like to invite Danny Camber to the front. We're excited to introduce a new member of our team, Danny Camber, who will be joining us as Assistant Principal of Petaluma Adult School. Danny brings a wealth of experience and dedication that will be an incredible asset to our community. Danny assumed his duties on October 17th, 2024. Danny graduated from the University of San Francisco, from University of San Francisco in 2011 with degrees in European history, American history, and Spanish language and literature. In order to pursue a teaching career, he earned a master's degree and teaching credential from Stanford University in 2015. Most recently, he competed, completed his master's in educational leadership at San Francisco State University in 2023. Danny has nine years' experience as a classroom teacher and four years as a department chair in Nevada, at Nevada High School. In addition to his teaching role, he coached football, track and field, and esports. Most recently, Danny held a teacher on special assignment position where he successfully led a team in reducing the number of ATRA students by seventy, seventy-five percent over three years, and developed a student athlete intervention program resulting in an eighty-seven percent reduction in academically ineligible students in its first season, and a remarkable one hundred percent success rate the following year. Danny has been honored twice as Nevada High School Teacher of the Year. Growing up in Petaluma, Danny is thrilled to return to his roots. He lives in Roner Park with his wife Baxter, their golden retriever Riley, and their ten-month-old son George. Danny values being closest to family and is excited to contribute to our vibrant community. He is passionate about the mission of Petaluma Adult School and is grateful for the opportunity to work with Petaluma City Schools. Please join us in welcoming Danny to the PAS family and we look forward to his positive impact on our students and community.
Thank you, folks. I really appreciate the opportunity to come home. It's really nice to be back in Petaluma. They told me the job was going to be joyful and it has been joyful every single day that I've been here. Thank you so much for trusting me.
Awesome. And keeping up with the good vibes, we're going to move on to recognition of Students of the Month, starting with Kennelworth.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our October Student of the Month, Sophia Buwak. Sophia was chosen Student of the Month because she is one of our most impressive student leaders. A four-point-oh student, Sophia is also a talented musician and important member of the Kennelworth Leadership Class. Fabulous, friendly, hardworking, respectful, a stellar student are just a few of the superlatives Sophia's teachers use to describe her. Mr. Clemenoch, who has Sophia in his band class for a second year, proudly shared, Sophia is hands down one of my top players. She has been first-chair clarinet since she arrived at Kennelworth. In addition to playing in Kennelworth Symphonic Band, Sophia is also playing with the Noma Winds. The Noma Winds are a county ensemble hosted by Sonoma State's Music Department for premier junior high and high school musicians. Kennelworth's leadership instructor, Mr. Monno, was eager to add, Sophia is a Renaissance woman. She can do it all. If she's not volunteering for one of her many leadership roles, she's helping appear or she is figuring out what she can do around campus to support the Kennelworth community. After high school, Sophia would like to attend a university, possibly UC Santa Barbara, and pursue a degree in architecture. Kennelworth Junior High is lucky to have Sophia as one of our students. We know Sophia will continue to do great things in the future. Congratulations, Sophia.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our October Student of the Month, Nynell Ho. Nynell was chosen Student of the Month because she is one of Kennelworth's most outstanding student athletes. Nynell is kind, hardworking, and is respected by her classmates and teachers. Impressively, Nynell has earned a four-point-oh grade point average her entire time at Kennelworth while participating and excelling in sports year-round. Mr. Caldwell, Nynell's seventh-grade history teacher, shared, Nynell is very determined, creative, and humble. She gives her best on every assignment and is an excellent writer. Ms. Fahy, Nynell's BE teacher enthusiastically added, Nynell sets the bar high for herself and always exceeds it. Nynell leads by example and is an inspiration to her peers. Nynell has not only excelled in the classroom at Kennelworth, but she has also performed at a championship, championship level for both the Colts cross-country and track teams. Nynell captured the eighth-grade league title in cross-country this fall, and she looks forward to defending her eight-hundred-meter and mile championships this spring for the Colts track team. When Nynell is not winning races on the track for Kennelworth, she can be found playing soccer and flag football. After high school, Nynell plans to attend college, possibly in her dad's home state of Hawaii. We at Kennelworth are confident, Nynell has a bright future ahead of her and the world is in good hands with Nynell. Congratulations, Nynell.
Congratulations, Sophia and Nynell. And before I forget, Sophia's friends and family, can you please stand so we can recognize you and all your contributions? And then, Nynell, I know your friends and family are here too. If you all can please stand and celebrate you. And don't worry, friends and family, we'll have an opportunity for a picture with all of the Students of the Month at the end of this section, so thank you all and congratulations again. And next up, I want to call up the Bantams at Petaluma Junior High.
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our October Student of the Month, Samuel Hernandez Diaz. Samuel was chosen as PJHS's student, October Student of the Month because he is all things Bantam. But most notably, Samuel is trustworthy, neighborly, and authentic. Mr. Dosery, Samuel's broadcasting teacher, said Samuel has the energy of everybody's favorite small-town mayor. He knows everyone and is always, and always has a kind word or three to share. His friendly, he is friendly, genuine, and sets a great tone. Ms. Garvey, Samuel's math teacher, shared that Samuel is friendly, kind, and responsible, as well as being a focused and hard-working student. He is especially mindful of his friends who are not yet fluent in English, providing guidance in and out of the classroom. And Ms. Clodan added that Samuel is a diligent self-advocate who actively participates in his education. Samuel said that some of his favorite things about PJHS are all of his classes and spending time with his friends at school. Samuel said that outside of school, he likes to be outside and spend time with his animals. He is starting 4-H this year. Things that Samuel is looking forward to about high school are meeting his new friends and taking new courses. After high school, Samuel would like to attend a university and pursue a career as a cardiologist. Samuel brings a positive, a positive and inclusive energy to campus. He is always said, he always says hello and asks how others are doing in a genuine concern. We can count on Samuel to lead a hand, to lend a hand with any task that needs to be done. Samuel is polite and genuine. Being greeted by Samuel is surely to be the highlight of anyone's day. Samuel's mom is especially proud of Samuel for working hard and setting new goals for himself all the time. Samuel's mom hopes he never changes and won't, and we won't agree more. We are lucky to have Samuel representing PJHS as our October Student of the Month. Congratulations, Samuel.
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our October Student of the Month, Elena Gutierrez. Elena is being recognized as Student of the Month because she is kind, responsible, and an excellent citizen at school. Elena's teachers say that she is an active learner who is a leader and helper to all. Ms. Peterson, Elena's science teacher, says that Elena is amazing student and she is lucky to be Elena's teacher. Ms. Oh, Elena's art teacher, shared that Elena is such a pleasure to have in class. She is kind, motivated, hard-working, and a fantastic artist. She tries her best on all of her project and never, and never quits until her work is of exceptional quality. I've never been amazed by the work that she has produced in both seventh and eighth grade. I look forward to Elena's artistic creations throughout the school year. When asked what she likes most, most about PJHS, she said that, I enjoy all of PJHS, but there are definitely classes and teachers I enjoy more. I specifically enjoy leadership, art, and science, which includes the teachers of these subjects, Ms. Austin Dorf and Ms. Peterson. I also love the dances PJHS holds because they're always really fun. Elena is looking forward to high school and having an opportunity to participate in all of the activities it has to offer. Elena shared that, this about her plans after high school. I would like to go to college at Cal Berkeley. The main reason for this decision is because Berkeley has the best psychology program in the country, which is exactly what I would like to major in. In addition to being an outstanding scholar and leader at school, Elena also likes to hang out with her friends, practice taekwondo, and participate in track and field at PJHS in the spring. Elena's family is also incredibly proud of her accomplishments, especially that Elena has recently became a second-degree black belt, black belt in taekwondo. Elena's mom, Tabitha, shared that Elena has persevered in martial arts and has contributed to her exemplary leadership qualities. Elena's family also shared that she is and has always been independent and driven to succeed and push forward. Elena is not afraid to ask for help when she needs it. We are lucky to have Elena representing PJHS as our October Student of the Month. Congratulations, Elena.
All right, can I have Samuel's friends and family stand up, please, so we can celebrate your contributions? We know it takes a whole family and a whole village. And Elena, can I have your friends and family, please, stand up as well? Congratulations, Samuel and Elena. And then we're moving back across town to the Gaucho's over at Casa Grande. Are they on Zoom? Or, oh, no, okay. I was like, where'd they go?
Starting off, we have Stella Cooney. While Stella has worked tirelessly in the classroom and at the JC, much like her other peers, she has exhibited, exhibited her true strength through her multiple extracurriculars. She has co-founded the Positivity Project, a club on campus that de-stigmatizes the conversation around mental health and that has raised over $3,000 towards National Alliance on Mental Illness. After being awarded Sonoma County's Youth Volunteer of the Year, Stella got offered to join National Alliance of Mental Illness's Youth Board, where she collaborates with other schools on increasing mental health resources and awareness. One of her favorite opportunities has been, has been being a part of her school's Health Official Students of America chapter, where she recently visited Washington DC for a leader, Leadership Academy, filled with networking opportunities from state officials coming from all over the country. Stella also works at Stockholm, a local restaurant downtown, where she is able to do her favorite thing, talk to people all shift. When, when she is not pursuing these passionate endeavors, she is either training for a half marathon or traveling the world, which she hopes to continue doing at a four-year university next year, while ma- majoring in medical anthropology, with hopes of becoming a naturopathic physician.
Okay, it's, oh, no, yeah.
Pranav Krishna. Pranav is a senior at Casa Grande High School who has a variety of different interests. He has taken fourteen honors classes, JC and AP courses, and has maintained good grades in all of them. He loves learning about almost anything and everything. He volunteers at Seris, Community Garden at Petaluma, and has been an intern of CAPS, Climate Action Pathway for Schools, since last year, when he learned, where he learned, has learned more about the environment and how we can reduce our environment impact. He is also a youth member of Petaluma City Climate Action Committee and is learning a lot about how government committees work. Pranav loves to help people. He is the vice president of tutoring club and loves to tutor in a variety of subjects, including math, history, and science. He is the president of Academia Decathlon and is trying to restart the program at CASA, which has been very successful in the past. In his free time, he loves to read, do magic tricks, and do all sorts of hijinks with his brother and his friends. Pranav hopes to get into a good four-year, four-year university and further explore his diverse interests. Pranav would like to thank his friends and family for all the help they have given him.
And can we have Stella's friends and family, please, stand and be recognized? And can we have Pranav's friends and family, please, stand and be recognized? Congratulations to you both and a big shout out to ACTEC, definitely, or CASA, CASA 2011 over here. With what time, Madeline Cloud. Moving on to Petaluma High's Students of the Month.
Okay, so first up, we have Corey Huppert. Corey is a senior at Petaluma High School. He does his best to stay very active in the school. He is a part of the varsity football team and also a chapter officer for FFA, and he's also a lead keeper at the Petaluma Wildlife Museum. Corey likes to spend his free time fishing and hanging out with his buddies. Okay, I don't think Salma is here, but next up we have Salma Jimenez. Okay. Salma is proud to be called a senior of Petaluma High School. In her four years at the school, she can say that the loving environment created by the staff and students contributed to her success academically and personally. Being a freshman at a new school after coming back from the COVID pandemic was tough at first, but in no time, Salma found her place and knew what she wanted to take from Petaluma High School. Each year, Salma challenged herself with rigorous courses, trying to feed the unquenchable desire for knowledge. On the way, Salma found the perfect balance between her academic life and her responsibilities outside of school. Aside from school, Salma has the role as lead pianist at the church she assists in. After completing her assignments at home, she sits down and practices on her keyboard for the upcoming church service, knowing her performance has to be perfect for God. So far, Salma has enjoyed her senior year over the rest of her high school years. She has had the opportunity to be a bilingual student tutor to a class of English learners. The feeling of helping others with a language barrier and contributing to their success in high school has more value to Salma than having an A in a course. With this compassionate character and willingness to help those in need, Salma hopes to take it in her future career in public health and change the lives of others in a hospital setting. Congrats.
All right, we have Corey's friends and family here in the audience to be celebrating. Congratulations. And Salma, your friends and family, if they could stand. And now, moving over to San Antonio High School for our Student of the Semester.
We chose Lulu as our Student of the Semester because she exemplifies the motto San Antonio student. Lulu joins San Antonio in the fall of 2023. She got to work immediately and her hard work on commitment to improvement paid off as soon as she earned As and Bs in most classes. Ms. Lauer recalls her fir-, sorry. Ms. Lauer recalls her first week at San Antonio on her first mentor day. She fiercely served as student representative on the PBIS focus group. According to Nikki Jackson, Lulu really worked hard during summer school, showed up consistently, and had good relationships with her teachers. She was a great community member at San Antonio, took pride in her charcuterie boards, and was always willing to help out when she needed. She's compassionate and cares about her fellow students, celebrates her successes, and we really were able to watch her mature and become a responsible community member at San Antonio. Ms. McGary says she had the pleasure of having Lulu in both her English and government class last year. She was always engaged and confident discussing the subjects. She often showed empathy and was afraid to express her opinion, or was not afraid to express her opinion. She also joined Ms. McGary in making smoothies with the cooking club. Her friend Kylie Miller says Lulu is passionate about what she is going to do in her future and that she cares a lot about her friends. Lulu graduated off the first grading period this year. She says she appreciates all the support she received during her time here at San Antonio and appreciates her tribe for being there when she needed them. She also said she does nails on the side and is interested in possibly pursuing a career in cosmetology. Her positive attitude made a difference in our community.
Congratulations, Lulu, and congrats on graduating. Do we have, do we have Lulu's friends and family here in the audience to celebrate our Student of the Semester? If you can please stand. And let's give it up one more time for all of our Students of the Month and Students of the Semester. And to keep on the theme of students, let's move into school reports from Petaluma Junior High.
Hi, my name is Anna Ramirez-Rumo and I am in eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Riley Everly and I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Seraphina Gazoli and I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Riley Freshy and I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Avery Ian and I'm in seventh grade.
Hello, my name is Sam Hernandez and I'm in eighth grade.
We are here to tell you all about what makes PJHS so special. Last year at PJHS, we really prioritized three main things: recruitment, building new programs, and campus culture. These paid off extraordinarily well for, for us, so this year we decided to build on these priorities with a few twists.
Our revised priorities for this school year are building community connections, continuing to celebrate our campus culture, and enhancing our academic opportunities and supports for our students. Let's take a closer look at each of these.
First, let's see how we're strengthening our connection with our community.
In May, PJHS hosted a series of workshops facilitated by PKE, Parent Institute for Quality Education. These workshops trained parents, most of which were predominantly Spanish-speaking, how to support their students through their education, as well as how to partner with schools to increase family engagement. There were well over forty-five parents graduates from, from, from this program.
A few weeks ago, we held our first-ever seventh-grade parent boot camp. I'm sure you can imagine the transition from junior high can be challenging at times, even for parents. So we hosted our workshop that answered many questions parents had about how they can best support their child academically and socially, emotionally, as they begin their junior high journey.
Who doesn't love a free lunch? Ray's Deli continues to be a favorite spot that the PJHS students visit after school. And this year, we partnered with them to sponsor our Student of the Month, just like Sam. So each month, our two Students of the Month get treated to a sandwich and a drink for their academic achievements. Thank you, Ray, for being such a great part of our community.
Just last week, our entire eighth-grade class went on a field trip to PHH, PHS and SSU to see firsthand all of the potential opportunities ahead of us. Our field trip started at PHS where we were toured around campus by Link Cruz students. We then traveled up to SSU where we learned more about the Petaluma Promise and visited several spots around campus. Guaranteed admission into the colleges great and all, but our favorite part was definitely eating lunch in the dining common.
Fair enough.
Next, let's see the new academic opportunities and support we are providing this year.
One of the most popular classes on campus is our intro to digital media. It's so popular, in fact, we doubled the number of sections we offered this year. So now, our students get double the access to professional equipment, double the amount of airtime of our Bantam broadcast program. double the amount of airtime of our Bantam broadcast program, and of course, double the amount of Mr. Dosery.
Speaking of doubling things, we have also doubled the sections of our advanced English and accelerated math programs. In an effort to open access to these courses and challenge our students to push themselves academically, we are now on track to quadruple our offerings of advanced and accelerated classes by next year. Look at all of these smart Bantams.
And lastly, in alignment with the district goals of supporting students with IEPs and multilingual learners, we are now offering co-lab ELA courses in addition to existing co-lab math classes to assist our students with IEPs. We also have restructured our ELD program to better meet the needs of students with varying levels of English proficiency.
Last but certainly not least, on our list of priorities at PJHS has been our school culture.
We hear it all the time. The vibe at PJHS is so great. Well, that's because of our kind and inclusive students, as well as our caring and supportive staff. All of our amazing campus activities, rallies, extracurriculars, along with our engaging classes make PJHS a fun and supportive place for students.
To showcase how students and staff are coming together to create a safe, positive, and inclusive campus, PJHS is in year two of our Safe School Ambassadors Program, thanks to a grant from Sonoma County Offices of Education. A diverse group of staff members and students that were, some involved last year and some new, were chosen to work with some staff members in a two-day training to become active leaders amongst their peers to interrupt bullying, discrimination, or other behaviors that contradict our values at PJHS. Students continue to meet monthly to discuss and find solutions to issues on campus.
Word seems to have gotten out about all of the amazing students, staff, and programs at PJHS. From the beginning of last school year to the start of this one, we have grown our enrollment by almost fifty students, and we have a hunch that only more will follow.
Last but not least, if there's one thing we're most proud of, it's winning the 2024 Petaluma Argus Careers People's Choice for Best Public School. Let's see if we can go back to back in 2025.
To sum things up, let's take a look at one of our first Bantam broadcasts this year where students and staff talk about what makes PJHS special.
Hello, Bantams, and welcome to our first weekly update for the week of September ninth.
Hello, Bantam. The theme for this week is what makes Petaluma Junior special. And what I think makes Petaluma Junior special is the commitment of our students and staff to making our campus the best in Petaluma.
PJHS is awesome because of the staff and the people in it.
PJHS is so special because of the positive vibes on campus and how loving everyone is to each other.
Like the people and the community. Everybody here is really nice and we have a really great campus.
The staff, the students, the views, the roses, Alfredo.
PJHS is awesome because the campus.
The staff and especially the principal and Ms. Garcia and the cookies.
Uh, probably the amazing campus and the great people.
Staff is pretty great.
And the cookies.
The cookies are really bust.
Yeah.
Everything about Petaluma Junior High School is awesome.
I mean, what makes PJHS awesome is all the teachers and all the students that get involved with the school and all of the fun activities we have, and I think that's what makes it very special.
Uh, what makes PJHS awesome is all of the people. We have the best students, the best staff, and just the best families, and it makes it a really fun place to be.
I like all my classes, all my teachers, because they all work really hard to teach me and all the students what we need for life, and I appreciate that.
My favorite part of being an assistant principal is that I get to know so many.
Thank you all so much. And our last student presentation is from San Antonio High School, a school report. From there, yeah.
Hello, my name is Crystal Alvarado and I'm a senior at San Antonio High School. This is my third year attending San Antonio, and I will be graduating at the end of the year, if not a little earlier. What I like most about our school is how welcoming our teachers and staff and are to old students. Whether you are new or have been here for a long time, you are part of the community.
I'm Oscar Barahus and I'm also a senior here at San Antonio, and this is my third year here as well. I anticipate graduating early in the middle of next semester. Like Crystal said, the staff and teachers at San Antonio are some of the most welcoming people you will ever meet. The overall environment, in my opinion, has been the best I've experienced in my school career. There is always someone willing to help us. Here are some of the things we've been up to since we last presented to the school board. First, we'd like to recognize and thank San Antonio's senior Daniel Vera for representing alternative education as a student board member this year. We started off the year with sixty-five students, over fifty of which were seniors. We've had a smooth start to the year and five students were able to graduate at the end of the last grading period. We currently have sixty-seven students enrolled, of which seven more will most likely graduate in November. We're looking for more students, so if you know any good candidates, send them our way.
We held our first award ceremony of the year and presented certificates for students who earned honor roll and students who had perfect attendance. We had three students earn a GPA of four point oh and another twenty-three students earn a GPA between three point oh and four point oh. Seven students received awards for a hundred percent attendance. Pablo Chavez-Vasquez was our student of the grading period. On September eleventh, we held our back-to-school night and pasta feed. While the win kicked up, it was still a great success with students and family members in attendance. Ms. McGary and the students prepared and served dinner for everyone. San Antonio senior Juan Jimenez and a couple of his band members played live music during the event. It was great to see a number of parents, students, and siblings and staff, district administration gathered in the quad to celebrate our students and our school.
On September twenty-fifth, we had our second mentor day of the year. During mentor days, all students will meet with their mentor teachers for a day of team-building activities, which include classroom circles, reviewing individual credit needs, recording credits earned, and digital citizenship lessons. We ended the day with a basketball competition and handing out San Antonio senior t-shirts to all our new seniors. We again have Martin Tavasu working at San Antonio as a student mentor and coordinator of our suspension diversion program. Martin's program Circle of Success is invaluable and has benefited many students at San Antonio. When possible, in lieu of suspension, Martin facilitates restorative work with students in a productive manner rather than just sending them home. One component of the diversion program is several hours of community service. Martin has been providing community service projects for students on the San Antonio campus. This way, they are also giving back to their school community. The Cooking Club is under the way again. With Ms. McGary providing an opportunity for all students to be involved, besides preparing the food for our pasta feed, the students met one day after school to make delicious fruit smoothies.
This year, whoops. This year, Ms. Campos, our student advisor and college career coordinator, has started a series of Friday workshops for interested students. Each Friday, there's a different topic presented. Some topics include our resume building, SRJC account registration, scholarship information, time management, and other activities. So far, the workshops have been well-attended and very well worthwhile. Step up to Stevie's every other Friday morning before school. Mr. Stevenson and staff can be found at Stevie's Cafe out in the front of San Antonio every other Friday morning from eight thirty or eight o'clock to eight thirty. They serve free hot coffee and hot chocolate and a sweet treat for everyone that wants to stop in. Students, parents, siblings, community members. If you're in the neighborhood at the time, stop on by. Here is a list of upcoming events for San Antonio High School. Thanks for your time and thank you for continuing to support alternative education.
Thank you all. As promised, I'm gonna let us have a break, but before I put us on break, I want a picture of all the students who presented or got an award tonight and then all of the Students of the Month. No, it's, yeah, it's crossed off on my, they're gonna be next time, or in the spring. Yes. All right, I'm officially gaveling us out for five minutes. Thank you. All right, so now moving on to our report on recruiting and hiring of secondary teachers. Take it away, Jason.
All right. You ready, Dave? Okay, all right, so, um, thank you. So I put together a little bit of a presentation based off of our last conversation about both some of the practices that we're using in human resources for hiring, and then also some of the historical data of how we've been able to hire. So planning on going in this order, first just talking about our recruiting practices, sharing with you some of the data from the last three years around our hiring. And then this was also kind of in the context of talking about staffing for a seven-period schedule. So I'm gonna relate this data then to that, and then actually not talk about challenges in hiring, but actually talk about plans for not having challenging and challenges in hiring. Tilted it a little bit. So first of all, our recruiting practices. So as you may know, EdJoin is our main thing, and I shared a quote about EdJoin from EdJoin. I just thought it was funny. They, apparently they are the number one education job site. But in all seriousness, EdJoin is like the number one place that all certificated staff are going there. It is the main hub for hiring. We have tried some other, some other ways to hire when things are tough and found that that was very unsuccessful. We are using other things for classified, but for certificated, EdJoin is the main place that we're going. One of the things that we have is we do have a dedicated staff member that's focused on recruiting, and, and so he also understands the ins and outs of EdJoin, which can be complicated. So we found that that's been a good shift over the past few years. We've also removed some of our application barriers. From EdJoin, for example, we have removed, we for many, many years had a two-to-five-minute video that we were requiring of all applicants was, was, uh, it may not sound like much, but it was a huge hurdle. It was from back in the time when we wanted to make sure people knew how to use technology. But it was really becoming a barrier. The other thing is that we've removed the requirement for letters of recommendation, because that was also another barrier of having people go and have to get those letters. So we've been looking at ways to streamline our process and make it a better process. So EdJoin is our main, our main avenue. Another one is job fairs. So the main job fair that we found success is when we work with Sonoma State, because those are applicants already in our area that are familiar with the county, are able to, looking for jobs in this area. We also, I did include a picture, this is a picture of the virtual job share that we, job fair that we went to in Tulare County. This was right as we were pulling out of the pandemic and it was a whole thing. We actually talked to a lot of candidates, and as soon as they found out where we were, they're like, oh, thanks, I'm out, and they were balanced. So, you know, it was a lot of, we were finding when we did this that a lot of people were not really willing to relocate to this area when we were going down into this, like the Fresno area. But that is something to consider later when we talk about opportunities. Is there other places where we can recruit outside the area to bring staff in? And another avenue for recruiting is we've, over the past couple of years, we just started residency programs. So we actually have two residency grants, and the, one of those residency grants has the PRDEIR, which is an elementary grant, and we have eight residents. And the bottom one, the EDSP is a special ed residency grant. We have six residents this year. And then the second grant that we have is the STEM grant. That is a secondary grant for math and science teachers. This year, we have three, three residents. And what the residency does is that traditionally, student teaching is something that someone volunteers to do. And so that we're only gonna get people that have the ability, the like financial ability to be volunteering for up to a year of their time, and the residency actually has allocated thirty-five to forty thousand dollars of stipends for those student teachers, so they're getting paid while they're doing their student teaching. So this is a huge step towards being able to bring more people into our system and, and give more people the opportunity to, to student teach and become a teacher. The other piece about this residency program is the agreement we make with these residents is kind of like we have first right of refusal. Like, like we have an agreement that they are not gonna look anywhere until we first are able to see if we can offer them a job. So it's a mutually beneficial relationship. Another couple of strategies that we've used these last couple of, last year, this year, we tried something called a super sub. And what we were doing was, was we didn't have our vacancy, all of our vacancies that we knew we might have coming up. And so we hired some people on contract that we said, if we don't have a position, we'll use them as a sub, knowing that, expecting that we would be needing them. So we hired three elementary teachers and we hired one secondary teacher. They all were placed into permanent positions before school started. So it was kind of like hiring when the window was good, but we didn't know those vacancies were there, and then we placed them in. But we kind of had the cover that if that vacancy didn't materialize, we still would be using them for substituting, which is also a need that we have. The final thing is that, is that when we have vacancies at the secondary level that we can't fill, we do have a practice of offering additional point twos. We work with our, our labor partners, the union, to, to first make sure, did we try and hire that position? And then if we couldn't hire it, did we first offer that, like, let's say we had a point-two vacancy in math, and we couldn't find another math teacher to take that, we would then see, were there any math teachers that are not one point oh, and we would offer that first to them? And then we would offer that to, we work with our department chairs to offer it to teachers that could teach during their prep, so they're actually working a one point two. So they're working over their contract. We're very cautious about that, like, we don't like to do that, and we don't want to over, you know, it's a lot to ask teachers to do. But it has been a practice that we've had to use more the last couple of years than in years past, just because of the way hiring has been. So how has hiring been? Let's look at that. So I did share with you all some data. These are kind of similar graphs around that data. This is showing the last three years of hiring. I included all of our hires. In the last three years, you can see for, the number at the top is the total. So in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had fifty-five total new hires, and in twenty-three, twenty-four, it was fifty-eight total. And this year, it was fifty-one total hires. And I broke it down into second, elementary, secondary, special ed, and SOC. SOC and special ed are really, we're looking at, at some similar, there's, there's some overlap with the credentials that they have, but they are different programs. I separated them out. What you can see is that the twenty-two, what stood out to me in this is that the, the past two years, we were actually pretty heavy in elementary. When you think about the fact that our district is two-thirds secondary and one-third elementary, but yet our elementary was almost equal to our secondary and, and more those two years. And that was interesting to note. This past year, you can see the secondary hiring was much, much larger and actually more kind of proportional to what our, our staffing is. The other thing that I looked at when I was looking through the data was how many, how many, because I'm thinking about, about how our ability to staff if we have an increased load. One of the things that I was looking at was how many teachers were we hiring after the first day of work? Because that would, you know, our goal would be to hire people early, so when school starts, we have people in place. You can see over the past few years, you know, this year it was much better than the two years prior. And we know the last two years, we were really struggling. We had lots of, lots of pips and stips and lots of people on interns. And we still have some of those, but it wasn't as much these last couple of years. You can also see that we were getting people in place earlier this year than we were able to in years past. So that, that was a good trend to see over the last three years. So that, that was a good trend to see over the last three years. And this last one was, I also was looking at of the staff that we're hiring, how many are we letting, are we are we separating service with them after the first year? This could be a range of things. They could move on, they could, they could move away, they could be non-re-elected, they could resign. So I wasn't qualifying the reason, but the, these are the numbers for the last two years. I did wanna highlight like for secondary. So this was about twenty-three percent of the staff that we hired. Five, if we released five, that would be essentially twenty-five percent of what we've hired this year at twenty-two secondary staff members. So, any questions so far on this part? Yeah.
Do you do exit interviews for those teachers that weren't let go or non-re-elected that just chose to leave?
We do, we do exit, like we have an exit survey that we give to people. So I don't meet, I don't meet with everyone that leaves and personally interview them, but we do a survey. And then I've had a couple of, a couple of times where people have wanted to meet and when they do, then I meet with them. But we do have survey data for the reasons about why they, why they leave and that's a combination of, of some some choice question, you know, like, like fixed choice questions and some very open-ended questions. So we do have that data. Yeah. Any other questions on this part?
Just wanna make sure I have some scale correct here, Jason. About mid-fifties per year in certificate hires, that's about twelve percent of our certificated staff. Twelve and a half, something like that. Is that right?
Mid-fifties, I mean, I would I would estimate, I'm ballparking that our certificated staff is in the four, four-fifties. Am I right on that?
Okay, so more like ten or be a little over ten, eleven percent, twelve. Yeah, it'd be around twelve percent.
Yeah.
And then, and then the revert, the flip of what you just showed. So you're saying our retention rate for new hires is seventy-five percent after the first year, roughly?
Roughly, yeah, roughly. I think I didn't compare with each of the, cause there's, there's the numbers and how they relate to the overall number. This one, I was trying to pull like five percent of the five teachers of the twenty-two would be about twenty-three percent. But it's roughly about that. Yeah. Any other questions?
Just, just, I just was wondering about the our enrollment numbers and how it impacts these, these charts. So does it, you know, I mean, if you're hiring, you're hiring to replace or you're hiring because we're increasing? Or is it a combination?
I think, I think it is a combination, like everything's dynamic, like this last, these last two years, we've been having to hire bilingual teachers for our McDowell Dual Immersion Program and like that, those are new teachers and we have schools that have been, we've had some attrition with enrollment. So we have some schools that have been downsizing and losing some staff. So it is a combination. I think just a couple, I can actually, there's two more slides that I wanted to point out and then I'll take other questions, but this might answer part of yours, Maddie. I'm not sure. There was another piece that with those point twos, I went back and counted how many teachers were on point twos for this year. So there were sixteen teachers that are at one point two. So that is essentially three point two FTE. So that's like, I would think of that as a hiring shortfall. So we hired twenty-two secondary teachers and we were short three point two teachers in that process. And there's, there's a couple of reasons that why that, why that might be. They're all, you know, it depends on the context and the situations. And so looking at, we had fifty-one certificated staff overall. I kind of just was putting this in perspective. So like, if we were looking at in general, this year, what we were looking at was trying to, we should have, our target was a little bit over twenty-five, that three point two cause a partial teacher is still finding a teacher. Like if, if we have a point four math, that's still finding somebody that can do that point four. So it's something over twenty-five hires was our goal this year. This year was much higher than the two years previous. But just sharing that. So I mean, to your question, Maddie, I don't know, like the fluctuations, it, it seems like every year is a little different depending on like the, the dynamic things we have going on in the district as programs change or open or things, the things we lose, we lose staff. So, yeah.
That's what I was wondering was kind of like, what is the dynamic of it? Is it driven by enrollment? And it doesn't sound like that's a piece, but not the whole thing.
I mean, I think there's a
And people retire.
Yeah, I, I think there's a part like, yes, it strictly like our staffing is driven by enrollment and there's a piece that I was, I think I'm trying to capture is like, what is like, there's this general, this kind of uniform like Sheldon was pointing out, it's somewhere in the fifties, like every year, we're gonna have some turnover with people having other, you know, people leaving for whatever reason, they're, you know, they're starting a family or they're doing a new job or they're retiring. And so we have that amount that is just probably kind of consistent. And then, and then, you know, so how, if that's one factor that we can kind of predict, I was putting that into perspective with like, okay, how does that affect hiring for seven periods? I think I just put in a version of the slides Tony, Tony shared with you all last time, but I did wanna point out like essentially he had, he had made, put forward two possible suggestions and there's iterations between these, but with seven periods for ninth through twelfth grade, we, there is a cost associated and the staffing separate from the, the staffing lift would be twenty point eight. So if we did that, we'd have to figure out how to be really aggressive about our recruiting. Because you can see that if we're looking to get twenty-five and struggled to hit twenty-five, getting the twenty, we'd have to make sure that we were really aggressive and, and thinking outside of the box about how we, how we hit that number. He, this was from his slide, the, the, if we were doing just ninth and tenth grade, we're looking at, at a lift of about like ten point four approximately. So that one is a little bit more manageable in terms of the lift. But I think either way, whichever way you wanted us to go, we just have to figure out what is the strategies to, to find the staff for that. Any, any questions about this part? The last, the last two things that I just wanted to share was kind of our plans for hiring. So we know that like, like we're more successful when we, when we hire in the hiring window. So some of the things we're looking at is that we're, we're working, we're working with the union and we're working with our secondary schools to start our process much earlier this year and for scheduling, student request scheduling, figuring out those so that we can have a real clear idea about what we need. That we look to hire as much as possible in the March and April timeframe. That's the best time to do it. And looking at, is there a way to expand some job fair attendance, like looking, are there areas? Maybe, maybe Fresno area isn't the best, but are there other areas? Is Chico a better, a better place where we might be able to get some people? Are there spots where we can go to job fairs that we would get candidates that would be interested in relocating? The other thing that we're doing is we actually are doing a human resources offering audit. I think we shared that, that we were planning on that. So they're actually doing that, starting that audit tomorrow. So they're gonna be looking one at workflow efficiency. So how can we be more efficient? In not only our processes, but also our recruitment. There also, we've asked them to, I've asked them to look specifically about parts in, in our processes and our practices that might have bias or systemic racism that are built, that we can address and, and, and address those things in the way that we work. So I'm hopeful that they will also give us some support in how we are more efficient about recruiting for, for new staff for next year. So, and, and that's it. That's it. Do you guys have any other questions?
I have a question based off of the last slide. How are we trying to hire for diversity? And then when we do have diverse candidates, I know a lot of times if you walk into an interview, you don't see anybody that looks even remotely like you. You're like, I don't wanna work here. So how are we ensuring that when we do have diverse candidates that the interview panel reflects the diversity that we say that we want?
Yeah, no, thank you for that question. So we, we have added into our hiring guide that some language, which I can't remember off the top of my head, but it addresses that, that our intention is to have, is to intentionally come construct hiring committees that have diversity, that are diverse and have diverse representation on them. When we look at our certificated within terms with like race, our certificated staff is ninety percent white. So we run the challenge of like, how do we manage that without putting the burden on that other ten percent to be on every hiring committee? So we're, we're looking at how we navigate that. Our first step was to, to put, add that into the hiring guide and to try to work with our hiring committees, like as we're forming them. So that's, that's me working with our labor partners. Cause when we choose a hiring committee, I will work, I'll, I will be selecting like, at least at this level, I will be selecting the administration that might be involved. I'll, I'll turn to our labor partners and say, we need, you know, we need three people from BFT or we need three people from CSEA. So working with them on, on trying to ensure that we have some diversity on the hiring panels. And then we still have to continue to work to make sure that at the site, they're also recognizing that that direction and navigating how to make that happen. So we have some, we have, we're, we're moving in the right direction, but we have room to grow in that for sure.
And then when there is a panel and there's maybe one or two people of color, is there any like pre-work done? Like you need to give space to the people of color who are giving their input? Especially in a room where they are very much in the minority.
Yeah, we at current, at, right now, we are, that is not in place. What I have been doing is I collected a lot of resources like, like hiring protocols and practices for bias training for hiring committees. So I'm looking at that now and we're, and I'm hoping also we get information from school services of California, cause I gave them that directive, like we want feedback on how we, that's one of the things that would be addressing that second part about bias and systemic racism. So I'm hoping to get guideline, like some guidance from them on how we can grow in that. But I'm also looking at, at resources. So that is what we're working on, but it's not in place at this time. Yeah.
On the same subject, I could recommend, you know, other sources, other pools of people you can draw on to get a more diverse interview committee include our, you know, neighboring districts and our parents. I mean, we have plenty of parents who can fit, you know, those roles. And that's good practice too, in terms of just getting the diversity of stakeholder groups represented on the, on the committee. You know, I would, I would encourage you to, another practice that I'm learning is, is quite useful in, in getting the, the bottleneck expanded at the source. You know, we always complain about the pipeline not being diverse enough and not being full. But there's a choke in that pipeline in the self-selection of applicants into a position based upon how you describe the position. And one of the things that we have seen very successful in getting diverse candidates to apply to submit their applications is naming criteria of evaluation that speak to the outcomes that we seek in our diverse students. So in our case, we are, you know, seeking candidates who have demonstrated abilities to advance EL students, to advance black students, to that Hispanic students. And that often removes the self-selection out for candidates who, you know, otherwise if they see kind of vanilla application, they just feel like I'm not gonna fit there. They're not looking for somebody like me. So that's something I hope we can try to do too. You know, the, the ask for this, Jason, I really appreciate the work you put in behind it was to help us think about, do we wanna go with seven periods for everyone or seven periods with just nine and ten? And, and part of the information we wanted to know to help us think about that is how competitive have we been as a district in hiring? And so, you know, when I hear that we got fifty, fifty hires a year roughly in the last three years, that's out of how many applications and, you know, how diverse of the applications? And then, you know, and I did hear you say, even with those fifty hires, we were short about three point two FTEs because we had to ask people to work overtime. And so can you give us a sense of that in terms of you know, how many of those fifty were our first choice? And they, you know, how, how good is our yield on our offers?
Yeah, I think, I think for, I don't, I mean, this is somewhat anecdotal, you know, based on my perceptions of how things went. So I hope I'm answering this, but the, we had some really good hiring in the spring and we were able to fill those positions really quickly and we got the candidates we want. We had some amazing, we've hired some great, great new teachers to our ranks. And, and the shortfall and the being short, I think this had more to do, I think that had more to do with some of our vacancies, not being clear on what some of our vacancies were until later, like until we got into summer and we have issues of when people resign in the summer like that. Also, we're a little bit over a barrel because now you have to do it and and a lot of the teachers that we're looking for have already found jobs for the year. So I think the part about people leaving in the summer because their lives changes or they make choices, there's not much we can do about that, but I think us really being, working on being prepared and knowing our vacancies really well early can help to mitigate that we're getting those, those first, you know, the, like getting the ones that we're looking for, getting our first choice teachers and being able to make sure that we're working well with business, that we have a quick, a streamlined process, like we've been working together to try and streamline that process so that we're, like, we're not dragging our feet through the interview process, through the, through the offering of a job, like that whole process. Those like little technical pieces are don't seem as important as they are because when somebody's looking for a job and they have a job offer from three districts, the one that is most responsive and on the ball is the one that people feel good about going with. So we are looking to do that. I think the part where we struggled was the, that we could have fixed was being more clear about all of our vacancies earlier, the ones that kind of evolved later.
What is early? What's, what's early in the cycle?
Early to me is in March and April.
Okay.
In March and April and may, you may be getting some in May as people say, you know, when people decide that they're not coming back in, in May or June like that. Like you being able to respond quickly when we get that. But if we, if we have clear ideas early on in, in March, April and May about what we need to hire, that's when we're in the best position to, to have a really good process, to involve, involve our stakeholders, to get the candidates that are really the strongest candidates that we're looking to bring into our district.
Jason, the reason why I asked about exit interviews and it's kind of part of this discussion is are people leaving because of bias or because they're seeing systemic racism in our schools and they feel like they just can't be here?
I can, I can, I can look, yeah, look through our things for it with that lens and, and get that back, information back to you. I think one of the things that just anecdotally I, I see in like one of the board goals is to diversify our staff and we, I shared with you plans for how do we develop a high school pipeline and, and those things. We right now aren't seeing a lot of diverse candidates applying. So I mean, I appreciate Sheldon's suggestion about is there ways to change how we, how we advertise and recruit. I'm hoping at the far, from school services, we get more information about how we recruit because I looked at the credential data and there are, and there are people of color coming through the credential programs much higher than you would imagine. Like in Northern California, it's almost fifty percent, it's fifty fifty. But we aren't seeing that in, in the application process.
So is that kind of what they audit, what you're hoping is that, that, that they can pinpoint kind of what we're doing that, or you know, how we can improve that, like, you know, targeting the outcomes?
It's that last one. It's how, it's how we can improve. Like, how can we improve upon? Like, I know that the HR team is working really hard and how can we improve and do better? The, the person that's gonna be working with us, Daniel Connolly is, is very, like she's worked in HR for a long time across the state and works across the state. So she has a wealth of they, this worked in this area. This is a really good strat. So she has a wealth of best practices that I'm hoping she'll be able to share with us, the ones that are most, you know, that would apply to our situation.
Any other questions or comments about?
So I didn't hear you say twenty is impossible. We can't do that. And
I, I don't know what's possible or impossible. I, I, I'm very nervous. I mean, I, I'm very like, if, if as, as you, you know, as the board directs us, then we're gonna do our best to, to do that thing. I, I, twenty makes me nervous. I mean, just look I, I, it, 20 makes me nervous, I mean, just looking at the numbers. We're three, three FTE short of 25 and then now we're going to try and double that. I, I don't know what the hiring will be like and if that was the charge, then we'd have to like get our very best game on, it would make me very nervous. I feel like, like if we were looking at, just from the hiring perspective, I feel much more confident about being able to, to up our game and be able to add another 10.4 is it, to me, I'm more comfortable, like I, I feel more comfortable about trying to hit that target. But again, we'll, we'll do our best with however we're, you ask us to move forward.
So then um going forward, like next year, we would need to add 10 more teachers.
Yes.
To the, but it's not 20 all at one time. Is that, is that what, what the hesitation is?
Yes, that's it.
You're still going to have to hire 20?
Yes, but it would be, it would be hiring half of them, half of them next year and half of them the year after that. That seems to me like a, 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 a more, a little bit more manageable. You know, I, I do worry about the 20, I just especially when we're looking at at being short this year. I think there's things that we can identify, we could have done better, but we also, we were, we were, we were working hard and trying to interview teachers and get it out there. So that, the 20 does worry me a little bit.
Hope I'm not putting you on the spot, probably am. Have there been in all of our work, like with Arrendo, with Equity Audit, with the work with the Kings? Has there been any um, what do you call them, recommendations given about hiring?
No, we um, no, I mean, I, not that I, I've been listening for that and, and I haven't heard that. I did meet with the Kings to talk about them um doing uh the audit and we ended up going with School Services. It was financially, they were very different. And to be honest, like, like School Services is, like they have an HR focus. So um, there hasn't been that, but there is a piece that isn't about recruiting, there is a piece about retention. So like that speaks to culture, so the things that we're talking about in those other conversations with the Kings, that's very relevant to retaining, like if we hire, you know, if we hire a teacher of color and they say, oh, like I'm the only one here and I don't feel comfortable, like they won't stay. So that the conversations about around culture are very relevant to being able to retain staff of color if we, you know, once, once they're in our organization, like how do we make this a, an organization where people feel like they belong, like they're welcome? So I think that has been in those trainings very much.
Okay. And that would be interesting too, as Ellen's bringing up the exit interviews, if any people brought those things up. Because I mean, I hear that anecdotally too.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look through them uh through our certificated, but I'll look through both because I think culture would, it, it would be applicable in both classified and certificated, I'll look through that. Yeah, yeah.
Great, all right, thank you, Jason. And moving on to Amanda, compliance and procedures for oversight committees.
I don't, I just took my own computer, do a clicker day. Right there.
All right, good night.
Start again, tonight I have an overview um on compliance and procedures for our oversight and advisory committees. Um, I'm going to start with our bond and on June 3rd, 2014, voters passed two bond measures, measure E and measure C. And this just gives a brief overview of what the intention of the bonds were for. Funds from the bonds issued will be used to improve the quality of education, repair deteriorating plumbing and sewer systems, upgrade inadequate electrical systems, increase student access to 21st century technology, renovate PE fields and facilities for school and community use and modernize, renovate classrooms, restaurants and school facilities. This is the very broad overview for the very long language. Along with the passage of those bonds was Resolution 1415-3 confirming the appointment of the citizens' bond oversight committee members. The oversight committee of the district was formed for measures E and measure C with the purpose of active, actively reviewing and reporting on the expenditures of the measures and the bond proceeds. The COC is required to advise the public through at least one report per year, which shall be made available on the district's website as to whether the district is compliant. This piece is fitting to um this evening because we do have our uh chair of the bond oversight committee, who will be Karen, who will be speaking later um when the annual report is brought forward. The, the purpose of the committee is to inform the public concerning the expenditures that have, that are happening and have happened at year. And um this question has been coming up quite often with having two measures on the ballot right now on how to be involved on how the bond funds are spent. And that is done through the process of the facility's master plan and um that ultimately the board makes the decision on how to spend the funds. The bond oversight committee ensures that the district is compliant with how the funds were spent. And this is all part of Ed Code Section 15278B.
I just have a quick clarification. So for the 2014 bonds, there was no facilities master plan, correct?
Cor- correct.
So who, so the board made all the decisions individual, on individual projects?
So I'm not, I don't, um, looking through the historical documentation, I'm not really sure how it, what happened from 2014 through 2021. Last year, we did a couple of updates and brought forward a spreadsheet um and the board did vote on the remaining bond funds on how those were going to be spent. Prior to that, I'm not sure how the decision was made. Thank you. This is just a quick overview of the requirements of the committee to prepare and publish an annual report, hold at least one meeting a year, though the recommendation is to follow the Brown Act. Most school districts decide to um by holding the notice, um 72 hours. They are allowed to hold emergency special meetings with 24 hour notice. And what um the bond citizens oversight committee actually can hold meetings via email approval too. The, there must be seven members, but there are five required positions. The business organization, senior citizen organization, taxpayer organization, a parent of a, or a guardian enrolled in the district and um one member who is both a parent and guardian and active in either site council or PTA. The other two positions are at large and through the resolution, the, the district elected what those would be. The oversight committee receives and reviews the annual performance and financial audits. Those are the independent audits that we work with NIGRO and NIGRO. We have our general fund audit and a bond performance audit is in addition to that. And then um the oversight committee provides an annual compliance opinion. These are our current members and we do have two vacancies um for the taxpayer organization and a high school PTA or site council representative. This is just a quick, a very broad overview of how the current bond funds have been used. Quite a bit of refine repairs and replacement, some miscellaneous upgrades, a new building for accessibility, drop off and parking alterations at some of our elementary school sites. Portables were added using bond funds, quite a bit of ADA access and safety and accessibility. This is a part of a requirement for going to DSA. Anytime you do an upgrade, 20% of the costs do need to be spent on ADA access. Electrical, energy inefficient product, projects. There was a large replacement of underground gas lines at one of our comprehensive high schools. We are in the um, just finishing up two battery backup projects. Prop 39 solar projects at nine of our sites. Additional play areas and outdoor facilities, quite a few HVAC upgrades and replacements, quite a few painting projects at a lot of our sites and interior renovations and flooring. Okay, so that, that was just the brief overview of the oversight, uh, the bond oversight committee. If there are any questions on that?
I have a question and you may not know the answer. I was just looking at the amounts and they're so small compared to what it seems like we're allowed to go out for. Were they the maximum, the, do you know if they were the maximum the district was able to go out for? Because I feel like that's like a third of what our current bond measures are going out for and inflation hasn't been that bad.
I don't, I don't know and I can look into it, there could have been a previous bond. So um our bonding capacity is whatever our current bonds, bonds are and in addition.
Yeah, I think the 91 and 92 were bonds were still being paid off.
Yes.
I mean, 90, they're still on my tax bill, so I think the last one's still being paid off this year. Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Do we want questions on the status of the bonds now or, or later where they have the report from our accountants?
The report coming forward tonight is it does have the, from the audit, but is specifically the oversight. Yep, we can do it then.
Okay, we'll wait till it, okay, thanks.
All right, um, the purpose of our parcel tax oversight committee is charged with overseeing expenditures funded by voter approved parcel taxes and ensuring that such district funds are spent in the manner intended by each ballot measure. The PTOC prepared, excuse me, prepares an annual report regarding the expenditures of parcel tax funds supporting district programs and services. And I had one slide, I apologize, that is hidden. Hopefully I can quickly fix that and put it in the right spot. Okay. There we go, sorry about that. Dave, are you able to refresh? Maybe that will do it. Yep, perfect. All right, these are um our current parcel tax measures. So we have the 2007 measure D parcel tax, which is roughly $765,000 a year and the new measure E parcel tax, which is anticipated to be 108, um, excuse me, $805,000 a year. Um, and for our junior high district, um, measure C, formerly measure K at just under $1.2 million per year. And these are our committee members for our parcel tax oversight committee. Often we have overlapping um between the two, we're thankful for the members that will do that. It is very hard to get membership and as you can see on specifically the parcel tax, we do have uh three vacancies that the taxpayer organization, the high school district, site council rep and an elementary school parent representative.
Moving forward, can we break with past practice of it sounds like it's been whoever applies first gets it? Can we change that?
Absolutely.
To not do that?
Yeah, absolutely. So um what we can do is we can either, we, I can off the top of my head, think of two commit, or two ways. We could either have, if there are numerous applicant, applications for a position, we could have a committee who then makes a recommendation of one application or all of the applications can come forward to the board.
I think it's probably better to just have it come to the board. I don't, yeah, I think commitifying it too much is going to be dangerous. Because I, I feel like when we got to a point, Sheldon, it was a really nice process. And though, even though we had way more applicants than we probably anticipated, at, at the end of the day, we, we got Sheldon out of it. So I, I think it'll be a little extra time um for us as a board, but I think it's worth, worth it. Unless, I mean, I think staff should still have the right to knock out anybody that like, like, if I said I had a kid in the elementary school district and you all find out I don't, like, yeah.
Yeah, we definitely will verify.
Verify that they are who they say they are, but otherwise I think it's better if they all come to the board because it doesn't, it happens like once a year at most, right? It doesn't happen incredibly often.
In a perfect world, we, it would be every two years um because the positions would be filled. So when they're vacant, this could be, until we fill it, it could be ongoing.
Perfect.
Yep, great.
Does that sound okay to all y'all?
Also along those lines, um, a little bit, you know, the recruitment would be um interesting to see how this is recruited, how, you know, how uh, you know, just what that process is in order to find not just the same people every year.
Yep, yep.
You know, um, and uh, because it's odd that we don't have a high school or elementary. Anyway, just thinking off the top of my head.
Yeah, we definitely can um get the message out there. The recruitment that we did in spring was a parent square notification and then had it on the district website. So we definitely can do more outreach, maybe on our social media and um the paper too. Especially for the taxpayer organization.
Apparently the one, Sonoma County Taxpayers Association like no longer exists and went defunct because no one joined it. So we're all taxpayers, it'd be really cool to have a progressive takeover of the taxpayer association. If anyone wants to lead that, maybe that's what I'll do in two years.
And then be on both of our committees.
And then come serve on this too.
All right, um, so what I have, the, the parcel tax is a little easier to spread out by year than the bond. So what we did is it's the expenditures for fiscal year 23, expenditures for fiscal year 24 and then what is budgeted for 25. So um the committee will, they um, because we're waiting for the annual audit, it is a year in a rear. So what the committee reviewed and also with the bond were the expenditures for the 22, 23 during the 23, 24 school years. So um, at this year, the parcel tax is anticipated to, excuse me, this was at the end of last year, not this year, is the $766,000. Sorry, I heard you click, I didn't.
I was just wondering what the other expenditures were.
Yeah.
Seems like a lot of money up there.
Yep, so for the other expenditures, those specifically are contracted services and supplies and some equipment. Yep.
So a couple of questions, why the big jump for the proposed 25 in other expenditures?
That is a great, hang on one second.
And then where does the parcel tax that we just passed? Because that was one of the things I wanted to ask later on was where does that come into? This is all from our old parcel tax, right?
So our, as you can see, our, that for the elementary specifically, we have overspent our parcel tax. So some of it is that, but yes, the new eight hundred thousand dollars. What, um, that is going through the budget advisory committee this year on ways to and through cabinet on how those funds can be expended. But they currently are not budgeted. The additional.
And then when do we get those?
Um, in January.
In January and, uh, okay, and that's eight hundred and five thousand a year?
Yes.
Okay.
In addition to the seven hundred thousand.
Be distributed in the same way because it was written very differently, right?
Yes, yes.
Cause it's for staff and.
Yes, yeah. So, um, yeah, so some of these would still qualify and additional language, there's additional language. So, um, historically over the last three years at the elementary, there have been music teachers charged there. Reading specialists, which were reduced at the end of fiscal year twenty-three. There were additional stipends given to librarians and some of the stipends are not built into the budget. So depending on what specifically that stipend is, there could still be stipends this year. The library assistants, the art docent coordinator and the other expenditures are specifically for, um, current, I'll do the current year, eighty-three thousand dollars is budgeted to supplies and fifty-nine thousand dollars is budgeted to services. So I can get back to you on what specifically those are.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah. For the high school parcel tax, which is just under one point two million dollars. You can see that, um, historically the, the district has made a contribution from the general fund. In six hundred thousand dollars, just give, give or take six hundred thousand dollars each year. And as that has gone on, um, the teachers have been reduced in fiscal year twenty-three. Six point two teachers were FTE were charged there. And in fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, it was reduced to four point two. So two less teachers, um, the librarians have remained at four point O FTE. The library assistants are at two point O FTE and the technology support specialists are at two point O FTE. For fiscal year twenty-three, the, um, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars of other expenditures was to services contracts. Um, I can look into what those were. And then in, um, excuse me, I was looking at the grand total. Let me break that out right here. There was a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars of expenditures in supplies. Twelve thousand dollars in services and six thousand dollars in equipment. Generally, equipment is something that equals over five hundred dollars. So I'm not sure specifically what was charged there. And then in fiscal year twenty-four, um, supplies were about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and services were about a hundred thousand dollars. And then, um, this year, what is charged there is a service contract for roughly a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. One of the things that that we did to mitigate the increasing costs without moving any of the salaries into the general fund is we moved, um, all of the supplies that were budgeted. We use the zero resource. Right, the unre, sorry, the unrestricted, our unrestricted funds. So, um, and this just shows the historical, um, that the bond, oops, excuse me, parcel tax has historically been overspent. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if there was a, a question. Okay. Did you want a question?
Um, from going from twenty-three, like just down the line. Is the change for teachers, is that like less are like working for the district? Or is it like a change in like pay?
That is a great question. So what happened between, um, fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four? Two teachers that had been charged there were removed. They likely were charged to another resource. Likely the district received a lot of one-time funding due to the pandemic to offset some of the costs. That's likely where they were charged to. But I can definitely see specifically which teachers were there and get back to you on that.
So the top left corner, just again for clarity, it's how much the parcel tax is and then the bottom is how much we charged. So then that's how much we over, have been overspending by. Is that right?
Yes. So, yep, the top left is what we get about each year. It fluctuates a little bit due to building and then, um, parcel taxes at age sixty-five. There is a senior exemption unlike the bond fund.
All right. Any more questions on the parcel tax? All right. One more. Budget advisory committee. The purpose of the budget advisory committee is, um, to provide recommendations on financial resource allocation. It comprises diverse educational partners, including board trustees, union representatives, parents, students and district staff who analyze budget proposals and suggest priorities. Recommendations are then passed to the superintendent who refines them based on professional insight. The final proposal is presented to the board of trustees for approval, ensuring students' needs are met effectively. Um, here are some of the goals of the budget advisory committee to, um, develop an understanding of the district's financials. Share information on revenues and expenditures and the status. Learn about the state budget allocation of resources, the difference between restricted and unrestricted. Carry over a lot of the terms that we use. The committee makes a recommendation regarding budget priorities which align with the district's vision, schools, priorities, local control and accountability plan and other comprehensive plans. The important to note is that all recommendations of the BAC are at the discretion of the board, whether to implement. So I think we talk a lot about our committees and encouraging people to join if it's the bond, the parcel tax, budget advisory, um, committee and just making sure that people understand that these committees, two of them, the, our compliance piece specifically, but something for the budget advisory. It's a recommendation to the superintendent and the board and, um, specifically the budget advisory. Um, our task with very hard decision makings, um, when we're looking at reducing our budget on years out and when roughly eighty-nine percent of our budget is salaries and benefits. That includes, um, making the really tough decisions on recommending, um, elimination of positions. So we just wanted to always remember that piece of the committee. The budget advisory committee has, it is open to the public and we hope many people attend and learn about it and ask questions. But there, the voting members consist of three PFT, which is our certified union members, three CSCA, which is our classified union members, three site administrators. We, um, will have, uh, two at the secondary and one at the elementary for the district split. Three community members, likely parents and we will, um, we're still working out what that split will be. Will it be one junior, uh, one elementary, one secondary and one who is not a parent? Or will we do the one and the two and then one classified administrator? And then that was just, if there are any questions on the budget advisory committee.
Yeah, I would say it's a good one for everyone to attend except board members because we can't break Brown Act. So the only, only people I would say stay away. Student board members can come, but um, our next meeting is on the thirtieth.
Yep.
At four thirty here.
Here in the board.
Here in the boardroom. So if anyone's watching and wants to be involved in the budget advisory committee, we would love to see you there.
Yep. And the focus in October will be on the parcel taxes. And then as we, um, discuss those over the next two months, we will move into, um, the fiscal year twenty-six budget and the proposed, um, eliminations.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
So when you say that the next, uh, budget advisory will be on the parcel tax, one of the questions that I just persistently go over in my head are, um, how do we have a list of how we're gonna spend the money, a perspective? And then, um, do we have, so this is the committee that will be making the decisions? The recommendations?
Yes.
And then, so then, so it's a budget advisory committee that will be making the recommendations as to how this parcel tax money is going to be spent going forward?
Yes. So for the first question on, what was, your first question was about what's been budgeted there? So essentially, um, one, sorry. Um, one of the things that generally happens and it's, it's very common for districts with the size of budget that we have, um, it's called the rollover model, model where a lot of times things roll over and they continue to be charged to a specific resource until they no longer fit into that reset source or the funding is not available. So, um, like at one point it was determined to, um, reduce the FTE for the teachers. Um, I'm not sure how that determination was made. And other than that, the staffing over the last, um, three years has remained the same for this piece of it. And what we did is we were, were working on reducing the expenditures because, um, one of the things about staffing is that, um, any layoffs or anything like that need to happen by March fifteenth. So, um, if we're not looking at, and just because somebody is being, not somebody, a position is being charged here. It's not that there aren't other, um, resources or other ways to pay for them, but the conversation really should be when we're talking about our general fund and we're needing to cut this much, that really does not take into consideration, um, that that we may be overspending in some of our other resources too. Like it broadens the conversation of, um, who did, what should be charged there, um, is, do the positions, are they district priorities? Do they need to use general fund? Do we have other restricted funding? So that really, when making the staffing, that is really the goal of, um, the budget advisory committee this year. And like I said, every, the, everybody is open to have the conversation. When it's time to make the recommendation to bring forward to the superintendent and the board, that, that will be only the voting members. But they will have heard all of the committees for the new parcel tax. That was the intention is to bring that to as part of budget advisory committee. We also can have a separate committee that is specifically for the new elementary parcel tax. If that, if the board would prefer that, um, the one, the, the one piece that we talked about, um, last year was, um, supplementing the overspending of that, but that doesn't necessarily need to happen too because, um, the class, smaller class sizes, I believe is in both in teacher retention. So there is some overlap or, um, we can be tasked with taking also the elementary and looking at, um, the difference and, um, bringing forward specifically for this parcel tax. What is the committee's recommendation for the seven hundred thousand dollars? Removing the additional and then having another, a separate conversation about the new, um, parcel tax. So I, I'm happy to go either way.
Um, I, I guess my, my question is that I, I'm very unclear as to the process that's being used to prioritize these expenditures. And, um, especially, I mean, particularly for the new parcel tax. And because it's only for elementary and it feels like there can be a lot of use of those funds so that we don't have to use the rollover, so that we don't have to, um, impact our, um, student advisors and things like that. And so, um, I'm trying to grasp what the process is.
So the process.
And if it is with the, with the budget advisory committee and then if that prioritizing is done through the, how it, uh, relates to our goals and objectives. I guess is, um, but it's the process that bothers me.
So the, the, the historical process has been rollover. That, um, what has been charged there is that's, this is the only information I have is that, you know, like as you can see for these pieces, um, from fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five outside of the stipends, which could still happen. Um, because those are not specifically budgeted. The, what's being charged there has remained roughly the same for the new parcel tax. There has not, there has not been a committee. We have not budgeted the, that amount. So that is, you know, the goal was to, in speaking in cabinet last year, was to make it part of budget advisory this year. My question to you is, is, is that the will of the board? Would you like it to be part of this bigger budget advisory? Or would you like to see a separate committee that is specifically for the new parcel tax? Because there, there is no process currently.
Well, that would be my druther, um, but, um, I'm just that, that one thing, but I, one person, but I, I am. So, cause we've been getting a lot of, um, information about the use of the rollover. And, um, I'm, I'm trying to, I, I'm sorry for taking, I know that I missed the last meeting, but I'm just trying to figure out, um, how we, if, if the rollover is always being used, does that mean that we did not then take from the general fund? Because we were always told that there was this, that we were taking from the general fund in order to cover this deficit.
So for, for carryover specifically?
Well, I'm just, you said it was rollover that paid for this and so that I'm, I'm, so I feel like I'm getting two different messages.
No, so carryover and rol, so two different things. So when I'm talking, sorry, let me clarify. So when I'm talking about a rollover budget, what I mean is so say that ten FTE were charged there last year, we moved, we rolled the budget. So that piece of it, I know that there have been questions on, on carryover. So carryover, it, so I have elementary up, so I'll use it. So say that it was flip-flopped and that the parcel tax was a million dollars and we only spent seven hundred and sixty-six thousand in a year. We then would have two hundred and forty thousand dollars of carryover. Carryover is the remaining balance, but we have been overspending our parcel taxes for a number, a number of years that there is no essential parcel tax carryover. There's been a contribution. There's been a contribution made from the general fund. And so any carryover that would have been allocated. Would have been made from a contribution from the general fund after the budget adoption. Carryover does not happen until um after the books are closed and generally in um. The end of September, beginning of October. So those are an additional contribution from the general fund. Which is then given to, and not, not only parcel tax, there's other restricted funds that contributions are made. So the reason why the carryover specifically stopped is when we brought forward. The elim- the eliminations um last spring, February or March. Um, the budget advisory had as part of the eliminations decided, moved forward. With cutting the one point two million dollars is what we decided that needed to be um eliminated from the budget. And then um that went to cabinet and the recommendation from the superintendent to you. Was to use any unrestricted, any. Outside of grants and donations, carryover funds to pay for keeping the TOSSA slash AP. For another year because they were meant to be part of the elimination from the recommendation. From the budget advisory committee. So the, the carryover that had historically happened in all different types of discretionary funding. Was all non-re- is unrestricted funds. So those were eliminated. And I do know that um the timing and the message was not clear. We through the process of EERC have had conversations and have spoken to the principals. And have offered those funds um to employees to use. We also specifically to um other. Depending on the restricted funds, there are other restricted funding sources that can be used. But there, there is no parcel tax carryover that was taken away.
Who determines how the carryover or the rollover? I'm still confused about the difference between the two. Who determines how that is spent? Who it goes to? Who makes those determinations?
So a rollover budget is essentially the budget model that's been used in this dist. It, it's very common for districts of this size. It's not, it's, it is a form of budgeting. That you, you know, you, you take the positions and you roll them into the next outside of eliminations. So that is how the budget has been historically set for each year. The, the carryover was determined um by if the principals. Principals are given site discretionary funds and if a site was given a hundred thousand dollars and they only spend eighty. The, the carryover was the difference. So it wasn't, it, it was whatever was offered. Not spent, that was moved to the next year. We've talked a lot about that last year. On, there's a lot of difference of opinions if, if districts should allow for discretionary carryover or not. Especially with unrestricted funds. Um, one of the models is, we've talked a lot about today's dollars on today's students. So that had been a historical practice in the district to allow for carryover. When the eliminations were brought to the board. And Matthew said that to save the TOSSA positions, we would no longer do carryover. So ultimately, when the board voted on that, the, the, the board made the decision. And it's, i- if you, you know, we've looked back and it's specifically, it is in the background information saying that. That is how the funds would be used.
Can I get a copy of Measure K just to see what it looks, what's in it?
Of Measure C?
Okay. Or C, whatever it's called.
Yeah, so C.
Okay.
There's, yeah, of course.
Cause I don't, I tried to find it and I couldn't. So I'm just kind of curious. What did the voters actually vote for?
I, if you would like for me to. I also, I mean, I, I'm happy to, if I have it up, if you would like me to put it on the screen.
No, that's.
Okay.
Cause I, it's, I need to be able to read.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, so just send it to me. Thanks. So I just have one more question. Um, and I just, I'm not, I'm very, I'm, I'm clearing up a little bit. Um, so parcel tax funds are restricted. Is that correct?
Parcel tax funds in the state of California are unrestricted funds that are.
Are unrestricted.
That are, that have to be spent on what the voters vote for.
So that's how you can take a carryover and put it in the general fund. It'd be, because I, I thought that they were restricted funds and you wouldn't be able to do that if it was restricted, right?
The, the care, the carryover didn't come from the parcel tax to the general fund.
It was a general fund tax.
Parcel tax, yep.
It has become clear.
Yeah.
Any other questions? On oversight ideally? All right. Thank you very much. I hope we all have a little more clarity. Um, I want to take a five minute break, but really five minutes, people, really five minutes, eight oh nine. Eight, ten. And we are moving on to our grad requirement recommendation.
Um, so we are, oh. Thank you. Okay, Dave's got it. So we are following up on the last board meeting, um, the study session on the um graduation requirement proposal. So um we're going to be talking about a few things. So one is um just information about required changes. To our graduation requirements based on uh new stan- state mandates. As well as some additional proposals that we are making. And then seeking feedback from the board about um the next generation science standards, um recommendations about science as well as CTE.
Thank you. Good evening. Great to be back. I've been here the whole time, yeah. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Thanks, Dave. All right. So thank you. Yes, and the microphone. So this is currently what we have on the books for our graduation requirements. You can see the list there. Um, so again, this is, we're just refreshing our memories on, on what we covered at some length. Uh, last we met on the topic. And you can see, just, just to note that we do have a current graduation requirement of two hundred and twenty credits. With a six-period day over the course of four years, students do have the opportunity to earn two hundred and forty credits. And this is our recommendation on behalf of Ed Services and Tony who is not here this evening. Um, for starting with the class of twenty twenty-nine. We again discussed this at length last we met. Um, highlights being an additional year of math. Um, a year of VAPA, Visual and Performing Arts. Uh, two years of a world language and then the additional state requirements of ethnic studies and financial literacy. Which are, are upon us here. Um, noting also that we are recommending at this time of two years of science. But we'd love your feedback on an additional year, a third year of science to align with the next generation science standards. And also uh CTE pathway completion, whether that's a default or a requirement, we'd love your feedback on that as well. And this is just another iteration of that, just without the, the highlights there, just all of the requirements listed in a row. And you'll notice, um, again, another important piece to consider. If we've, since we are moving to a seven-period schedule. Uh, students do have the opportunity to earn two hundred and eighty credits over the course of four years. Uh, so again, recommendation, ideas, thoughts around that number of two hundred and twenty? Or would we move that up? Um, again, weighing in the science um piece. As well as the CTE pathway portion. And I'll just have one more slide here, just some additional thoughts to remind ourselves and then we can go back and, and have some questions and, and discussion. If need be. Um, just a reminder that in order for students to be eligible to apply to a CSU. Or a UC, they need to earn a grade of C or better uh in that A through G approved course. It is simply just an eligibility threshold. It doesn't mean that a student's automatically enrolled or admitted to that university. Um, Pedaluma Promise apropos of today, we toured two hundred of our students from Kennelworth Junior High School. To Sonoma State. We had an amazing field trip, Ms. Vidaji. And I led the charge um and had an, had a wonderful time and, and thank you to the staff and the leadership of Kennelworth. We have one more tour. We'll be there again on Thursday with the other half of the eighth grade class at Kennelworth. You're more than welcome to join us. Um, with the promise agreement, that's guaranteed admission with a three point O or better, plus a number of other important perks. Including um priority housing, priority registration, the presidential scholarship. Uh, the promise is an exciting piece that we are actively promoting. Important asterisks in this proposal for you is that students who earn less than a C will still earn the credit. If they earn a passing grade in the course, they still earn the credit. That's five credits per semester, ten for the year. And finally, any student receiving a D or F will have priority in uh credit recovery to make, make up that course. Um, especially for courses that are required for the UC or CSU eligibility. So again, review, just refreshing our minds, uh, moving on from the topic of parcel tax. And um, so with that, some, some questions and I, and I thank you Gloria for the wonderful introduction. And, and curious what's on your mind.
Thanks for that review. Um. I remember in earlier conversation about um. Uh, I don't remember what the name of the, when a period, when a student has a free period, I forgot what that's called. Off periods, yeah. Anyway, you, uh, Joanna, you had referenced uh some ed code or law saying, you know, students have to be enrolled. Uh, and, and so I'm wondering, uh, I don't know what, you know, number that is or whatever. But um in, in these, in what you've presented here, Dan, you know, um. Two twenty required out of two forty possible uh pursued credits currently. And what I'm seeing is two, uh, in the seven-period model, two twenty required out of two eighty possible. Uh, you know, what, what, what are, what's the committee's thoughts on? What's the committee's thoughts on the number of required units to pursue? In order to keep the kids there in the senior year, because you can get to two twenty in seven periods by your junior year. So what's, what, what's the committee's thoughts on that?
Do you want to answer that? Then I'll follow up there. Well, it's an interesting question. I think it could be thought of a couple of different ways. Um. First off, if you're familiar with the state of California graduation requirements, they're far lower than our current two twenty. Um, so, and the thought was why would we raise that is because in order for, if, if our job is to truly prepare our students for maximum success in college and career. Then we set the bar at a certain level. And really, if we zoom out, that in my view is, is uh, is what this is all about. Um, why we are recommending this change is to increase opportunity for our students. So two hundred and twenty, if the board decides, could remain the minimum requirement for students. But we, we would add additional opportunities for students to um, to enjoy and to. Further flesh out their, their skills and their career connectedness and their, their future plans. Um, so to speak. And then we could build in um. Different pieces of, of policy to, to put guardrails on that so that that is clear for our students.
And I think that the, the focus of, of this presentation is about the, the courses and the, and the. Which courses we're going to require for graduation. I think there needs to be more discussion about the number of units that go along with that. And I know that some of the other presentations that I think it was more in the seven-period bell schedule. That Tony had proposed different possibilities for that. So I think that's something, this is first reading, so I think we need to come back to that discussion for sure. And if you all have any thoughts about that, obviously this would be a great time to hear it.
When we were looking at the budget proposal for the seven-period day and starting with ninth and tenth. Um, it would, it would seem to me somewhat logical to increase graduation requirements for ninth and tenth. If I was a junior right now and I was going to be a senior next year and you told me that I had to take more classes, there'd be an issue.
This is all for class of twenty twenty-nine that we're talking about.
Right, I know, I'm just.
So, yeah.
Can I make my point?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, so anyway, so I see increasing those requirements for ninth and tenth graders. It would just make sense, especially when they have to take more classes. Um, yeah, along those, uh, well, kind of along those lines. If we add another year to science and if we add CTE, that automatically will bring up. And that's kind of what we're talking about here. So it is relevant as to, you know, how many units we want to propose. Because, I mean, personally, I'd like to see another year in science and I'd love to see a CTE. Um.
Are you proposing another year in science and math? Because right now they just have, it moved from two to three years in math. Do you want three years math, three years science?
Yeah.
Did you have something to say?
I was just curious if the goal, maybe I'm just like not understanding it properly yet. But if the goal is to have more students who are like college and career ready, having a required um. Visual and performing arts class versus a CTE class. I'm just wondering what the purpose is for that.
I'm, I'm just a little clear on the, unclear on the, on the question. What, what is the purpose of having, can you repeat again?
The purpose of like requiring a VAPA class versus like a CTE course? When like the goal I thought was to have more students who are college and career ready.
Good, okay. So hopefully I'll, I'll answer um effectively. So the VAPA requirement is area F for air, A through G eligibility. And a CTE pathway um not necessarily can be. Um, all of our CTE courses are now A through G approved. Um, and some of them count for other areas of, of A through G. Like we have many science courses, for example, that are CTE, especially in our health sciences, which you enjoy. Many of those courses at Casa Grande are both area D lab science and also a, a CTE pathway. Um, so yeah, to really meet that, that ultimate goal of college and career readiness. Um, and with our college and career indicator um measure that the state now um measures all of our students' success through high school. They are looking for, for those, both of those buckets to be filled, both A through G and CTE. And just hopefully to put a, a further button on the topic. If, if we, if the district and the board moved towards a two hundred and forty credit. Um, for example, graduation requirement then. And with a third year of science and a CTE pathway completion, which would be two years. That would leave thirty-five credits of additional elective um available to students to take additional courses. That are not necessarily within those required courses. So just, there's some flexibility, obviously, with that. But those gives you one possible scenario. And one that we do see um with the two forty, we do see that fairly commonly with a seven-period day across the state. Yeah.
I just wanted to follow up on my. I just wanted to follow up on my question. I, I don't, I don't see how we can separate the, the issue of the courses required from the units required, because even to deliver this, you know, it's contingent upon our going to seven periods. And so anyway, I, I encourage the committee to address this. And another thing is on, on both what was posted on our agendas as well as this, I only count two fifteen. I mean, tell me where I'm short five.
Well, to, to your first point, so let me just say we will go back and, and come back with a clearer recommendation in terms of the.
I just want to know what, you know, what the, you know, what are type A type students, which we have a lot of, are going to do their senior year. You know, my, my hunch is we ought to bump up the required units, you know, by about forty or something like that. So that we, you know, to take advantage of what seven periods offers us, which is amazing electives for students to really dive into what, you know, they love and to find out what they love. But anyway, but on the more direct thing, where am I missing five?
You have a human interaction.
No, you got three there, so that's fifteen. And then count them up. There's, there's only two fifteen.
So it could be, and I didn't make the slide, so it could be that the electives need to be thirty-five.
Okay.
We will do more work on this piece and come back with more information.
And will students still be able to waive the one, the year PE with the, with the varsity sport? Yeah.
That's current practice with PE exemption, yes.
So then it'll, it'll stay that way, right? Because it's still, it just says two years of PE, so it'll still be one year PE and then like the sports exemption?
There hasn't been any discussion of changing that policy.
Okay, okay.
And isn't human, human interaction a course that parents can opt out of?
They can opt out of the sexual health portion of the class, and so that's part of what's, part of the, some of the issue is that students who need extra support classes then are, parents who are opting out of the sexual health portion, they're ending up waving out of the whole human interaction course, which shouldn't be happening. And so that's one of the other benefits of having the seven period day is that students would be able to have the human interaction class as well as their additional support class. But they should not be waving out of it, no.
So are we proposing, we are proposing this for next school year, is that correct?
For the graduate, for the class of twenty twenty nine.
That's our current eighth grader, so next year. So, and just looking at the dashboard for CASA, I can pull up Pedaluma too, but I'm looking at CASA. And when I look at math, that is an area where we are struggling, our students as a district. The only categories that are green or above are our white students, Asian and biracial students. So then what about everyone else? How are we, like if we move to the third year of math, what's that going to look like in terms of support for all of the other students?
So I think that's the conversation that has to happen, right, is that if we, so we know that students rise to the level of our expectations, right? And so this is saying that. To me, this is the message that we believe in you and we can, we believe you can do this. And now it's our job as the educators to provide those supports, right? So that's the next piece is, I don't know if it's going to be a committee or where that will happen, right? But, but gathering to identify, how do we make this happen? What supports do we need to put in place? And I think, Dan, too, if you want to speak to the idea of the math classes, the different types of math classes.
Sure, it's just, you know, very, thank you, it is just an idea. But it's certainly an approach. It's an instructional approach. It's a structural, programmatic approach with all of our required courses. I'll, I'll take you back to the example of the science courses that are both CTE career connected courses and very heavily sciencey courses. We, we could and should consider similar approaches with other content areas. Traditionally, math has not necessarily been one of those, at least in the state of California that I've seen. But there's opportunity there to consider different types of, of courses that would still meet the requirement, meet the requirements of the standards, but provide a different lens, a career connected lens, a more hands-on lens potentially for students to engage in that curriculum.
So I'm, I'm a parent for next year, right? Let's say I have an incoming child, like I have a junior, but let's say I have a sophomore who's already struggling with math right now at CASA. And I'm like, just get through it, you'll be done. So then the next year, what, what does the district, what are we going to have in place to help for that third year of math?
I don't think we can answer that right now. I mean, that is the work that we have to do is to identify what are the supports that are going to be put in place. Once we have clarity about this is the expectation, then it's the discussion of how do we get there.
It's hard for me to, I mean, I really want as many students as possible to be A through G, but I also want to be able to offer a support as well at the same time.
Yes, so I'm not saying that we wouldn't offer, we would wait to offer the support. I'd say that is what we spend this year planning. Right, is the communication so that parents know that this is the change? And then the work of getting those supports ready so that they're in place.
Has that started? It sounds like you had an idea of something. But then what? Is there anything you can share with us?
No, no, that is, I think that that has to be a bigger conversation with staff involved about what, what's the supports would be specifically.
I was done.
Well, since I did, I did watch the last meeting, three and a half hours. It was fascinating. Thank you all, because you asked all the questions I would have asked. But I did, I was jumping through my computer at one point because we did, we've had three years of math. You can, if you go back to that, that other, well, you don't have to, but we had two years of math and then we had math, science related, and it was a one year. And there was always like, what the hell is that? And, and so, you know, but it was a requirement. And so it is, it is now. So I don't know how we always filled that in, but it always had this math component of three years. So maybe not making it quite so, so scary and maybe having these other options that, you know, you don't have to take trigonometry or whatever it's called now. Is it?
What's also interesting too is that currently we do have about seventy-five percent of our students at both of our comprehensive sites that do take a third year of math already. So it's not, hopefully that puts it a little bit more in perspective. It's, it's not as big of a lift as, as it may seem, in my view.
Not, yeah, and I want to make sure that I totally agree that we absolutely have to have supports in place and well communicated to the students and to the, the parents.
Sheldon, you have to take the gavel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a gavel. All right, so we are on ethnic studies update.
I'm back. Right. Got our team here. So we are here to give an update on the work of the ethnic studies committee. And so to start, just want to recognize the members of the committee. We have Todd Siders, Jesse Redfield, Jess Lechon, Gallos, Marisa Alvarez, Megan McClellan, Nicole Walmer, Shayna Friedman, Shereen Jackson, Sandra Larson, Shannon Britton, Andrew Aha, Erica Noon, myself, Toni Hua. And then we had support from SCO as well, which was really helpful. We have had two full days of meetings this year as we have been doing this work. And our work has really been focused on the mandate for the coming school year for twenty-five, twenty-six, which is that we must offer one semester of ethnic studies. So that's really been the focus of the, of the committee. And the longer term requirement for the class of twenty-nine, thirty is that ethnic studies, one semester of ethnic studies would be a graduation requirement.
Over on the wrong side. Hello. Thank you. Um, so some of the things we thought of as we, yeah, we'll just go. Some of the things we thought of, the considerations we made as we were meeting as a committee was first of all that we wanted to go beyond the mandate. We were given, what do we want to give to our, our students? What do they deserve? What do they need? And actually, Sheldon, that comes up with your extra five on the two twenty, because we actually are hoping for a full year requirement and a full year course. I know that the board did bring up the idea of a ninth grade requirement, and that is something we considered. We thought about, is it better to get the students when they are young and we can really build that? Or do we do it when they are older and they actually have a little bit more lived experience, a little bit more functioning brain power to get there? And we also considered in ninth grade, we're already adding a seventh class to try to get students the ability to take every class as necessary on campus. Therefore, if we then made a ninth grade standalone course, that would just kind of defeat the purpose of the seventh period being added. And we're also hoping and recommending that anyone who teaches an ethnic study course does get the appropriate training. SCO is currently offering a training every month, but it is during the school day. And so we're hoping that we can work with SCO to bring something to PCS so that everyone can have the appropriate training. And we've got three courses we're going to talk about that we're looking forward to. Am I the next one too? I am. Oh, okay. So one thing that we are offering at Pedaluma High, we offered the idea of doing a English nine class with an emphasis in ethnic studies. The kind of concern here is then are we teaching multi culturally or are we actually teaching ethnic studies? And so we will need additional training for our English nine teachers. And it does all the things English nine does, but with then the emphasis on ethnic studies, looking as the slide says, on political, social, economic and cultural experiences. It would then cover the four groups that were mentioned in the state guidelines. And we could also add in additional bits for what our community actually looks like, so the students can see themselves in the curriculum. And we really emphasize not just looking at like power dynamics, thinking about identity, but joy and celebration and actually making sure our students see not just themselves in the struggles, but theirs, themselves in celebration and, and how important identity is and how much like that should be celebrated and, and loved in our community. And so, yeah, we're looking at resistance, resilience and perseverance. At Pedaluma High, we are actually looking at getting, working with ERWC to do kind of a test run with West Ed for a ninth grade ERWC curriculum, which is more nonfiction based. It's expository reading and writing curriculum. We already do it with our twelfth graders. And they actually have, they're working on building in and integrating ethnic studies. And so part of this will be, we, we would like to offer this moving forward regardless, but we might be doing it with the support of West Ed and the CSU system.
Hi folks. So about four years ago in COVID, we presented at CASA the American Voices Cluster, which was designed to represent all American voices. And that included a US history component and a junior English component. And I think the board welcomed it and I guess the good news is for follow through, it's still going. We lost the clusters this year, but what I'm trying to do here with this class is to take the existing US history class and essentially convert it formally into an ethnic studies elective way that students could take their US history requirement. So that would be our offering for next year at CASA. And so what that looks like is instead of a chronological, historical approach, we would look at Native Americans, Latinos, African Americans and Asian Americans in seven about week units, bringing in history. So it's kind of inside out, if you will. It's ethnic studies forward with stacking these US history state standards on, tacking it on instead of the more unfortunate traditional model of tacking on ethnic studies in a tokenistic sort of way. And that's pretty much the, the general idea. I could give a couple of examples really quickly, just so that you understand where I'm going with this. So for example, if I were teaching African American Studies unit, I would use that as an introduction to people of color and their participation in World War Two. So I'd bring in World War Two, first and foremost, from the eyes of the people of color who participated, fought, died. For Native American history, I go back to the colonial days and bring in the foundation of America, but again, from the perspective, first and foremost, of Native Americans. And looking at the entire historical spectrum as much as any US history teacher could actually ever cover, this would include all the themes in the ethnic studies, state guidelines, including resiliency, including joy, including resistance. Oh, one more thing. There's also a, sorry, there's a really incredible textbook out there that we're hoping to get in addition to the current standards based. It is absolutely mind blowing in terms of its quality and direction. So I just want to point out that I would actually supplement the course with that, that new textbook as well.
Shouldn't.
And then the course that we decided to come up with for a standalone course would be for eleventh and twelfth graders, so upper division, as Jesse Redfield touched on. So not only like getting them while we're young and kind of doing that integrated English nine class, but also getting them later in eleventh and twelfth grade, when we can talk about maybe more like serious topics, because again, that brain is a little bit more developed. But in this class, it is kind of a humanities based class. So we learn about history, we learn about English, we watch different, we want to watch different films, read different pieces of texts. But that explore socioeconomic, political and cultural forces affecting American society today. And then it highlights basically everything that the California state guidelines covers. And we're using real life experiences to frame the constructional, structural and social dynamics of race racism and institutional racism in relation to the experience of people of color in the United States. So touching on as much as we can. And again, I think the reason why we want to do a year long course is so that not everything is kind of shoved into one semester, because it's a lot, it's a lot to teach and it's valuable. So we want to do a full year so that we can touch on all those things. We can touch on the politics and the sociology of ethnic studies. And then the course also emphasizes, this was super important to the ethnic studies committee that Jesse Redfield also touched on and Todd Siders also touched on, the importance of talking not only about all the bad stuff, but also resistance movements and resilience movements and how despite everything that has happened, that groups still come out and resist and rise, rise up. And the course will provide students with knowledge, critical thinking. We'll have a lot of in-class conversations, a lot of reflections on our own identities. We talked a lot about interpersonal communication and other skills for them to not only just have to take a course, not only have to take a required course, but to have them walk out as better citizens in their community who are willing to work with all people. I think that is everything. Thank you. I think that is everything. Thank you.
So our next steps are to, um, start to survey teachers about, um, you know, just drumming up interest. I think there's a lot of passion in our committee, as you can see already, um, and a lot of just enthusiasm around, um, these courses. So, um, we want to do an interest survey to gauge, um, teacher interest and to, you know, start talking about the training, because it is a big component. Um, so that's what we're working on also. You will have the course proposals coming to you, um, later in this board meeting. So, any questions?
So I do want to point out that this was just two meetings worth. We, we absolutely like would love more time to grow this. And so the standalone was our, we want to make sure this is offered, like for the requirement or like it needs to be there, but our hope is that it will grow. I know many nearby California wide districts go fourteen, twenty different electives you can choose from. Uh, and so our hope is that it will continue to grow. This is just the, what's our first step and then where do we go from there?
So which would meet the requirement? Would it be the, the ethnic studies in the ELA class or the standalone elective?
So for next year, all of these meet the requirement of offering an ethnic studies course. In terms of the graduation requirement, I think the committee needs to have some more discussion about that. The feeling right now, um, is that what I, what I understand is that the ninth grade, that there's, there's a lot of, um, strong feelings about making sure that students take an upper division ethnic studies course when they're mature enough to really grapple with the, with the full content. And so if the ninth grade class is allowed to count as meeting the graduation requirement, then students wouldn't have to take the upper division class. And so that's the, that's the tension right now. And so the current feeling is to somehow that that we kind of don't want that ninth grade class to, um, to be able to check the box for meeting the graduation requirement. But that sort of has implications, right? So I think that needs more conversation, but that's where the committee is leaning right now. But for next year, uh, offering these courses will meet next year's requirement.
We want to yes and the requirement.
I think, uh, because this has come up a few times about offering at ninth or eleventh, but then that is centering the comfort of who? Because like that's more centered towards the white students for them, for them to feel comfortable. It's like, we live in this skin and in this experience every day. So an incoming ninth grader is going to have fourteen years of that racialized experience. So who's, who are we doing that for? That's just something to consider.
I was gonna say, I, I totally agree. I think, um, I think our minoritized students, you know, some, someone mentioned, you know, when they've had the lived experience to understand and grapple with it. I think minoritized students have this lived experience from kindergarten, and the sooner the better. But I think the grappling has to do with the, you know, the homogenous, you know, perspective of of these things. But anyway, I, I want to, overall, I'm super excited. I mean, this is like, uh, represents, um, some of the most meaningful progress I've seen. And I love the fact that these aren't, you're not asking us, I think you're not asking us to choose from the three, but like get, do all three and then as a start. And I, and I noticed, you know, the three course proposals, you know, it was pretty clear to me. You know, I think it was Todd, so he was the US history one, pretty well fleshed out. The others were pretty sketchy and I, my hunch is because, you know, we're, it is sketchy. It's a couple of days meetings of worth of work, but also giving latitude to the specific teachers to develop the courses as they would see fit, you know, when they get that assignment. Um, is that an accurate assumption? Okay.
Yeah, we, we're, sorry, I know you stood there to answer that, but, uh, we do really want to make sure that like people are trained and people are not assigned to this necessarily, but are going with this with their full hearts, because again, the students don't deserve any less than that. Um, and I do want to address, like, we are not worried so much about the majority's opinion for ninth graders. Like, we want to bring it into the lower grades. We absolutely do. Um, it's trying to figure out how to make that work. And the, that is one of the reasons we've offered ninth grade and possibly tenth grade to be integrated. We just want to do the yes and of, we want to make sure that this is given the full support and dedication it deserves without, like, we just don't want to phone it in, to put it poorly.
And I will say half of the students at CASA are students of color.
Yeah.
So it's not even the majority.
Yeah, exactly.
These are half.
Yeah.
So which, again, which half are we?
But I think they're not saying that we don't want to offer in ninth grade, right? We're saying we want both. We want to offer in ninth grade so that they get the early exposure and the early engagement, and we want them to take it again when they're, um, in the upper grades. And I, we did have this conversation explicitly about people of color are living this. We're feeling it. We're talking about it. When I think about like, I'm especially Todd's class, like that blew me away. Like, I'm like, I want to take that class. And so when I think about, I almost offered to be your teacher's aide, but I was like, I don't think I could take that. But, um, when I talk about the complexity of the course, I'm not talking about, I'm not, honestly, I'm not thinking about people's comfort. I'm talking about the intellectual rigor, wanting students of that age to have the opportunity to, to engage in that level of rigor is what I'm thinking about. And I, I feel like that's what the committee was thinking, but let me.
Again, I want to emphasize the the both and approach. Um, it was very clear right away from the committee that we understood what we were assigned, but we wanted to go beyond that. The, the passion in the committee and the teachers who are interested is what's going to carry this through. Um, I don't have a programmatic, step by step, uh, approach for inclusion at the ninth grade, but it's both and. Uh, I hear your concern, Joanna, very much about the population at CASA, and you're absolutely right. There's no reason why students should wait. It should be in the junior high. It should be in the elementary. But my biggest fear, after all the time I've taught, my biggest fear is that it becomes just a checkbox. It becomes a, a place where, um, we fill out, balances the class schedule, and such important, um, lessons are forgotten, um, by everybody. So I guess what I think we're going with this as a committee is trying to create a culture where more classes can be added, where, um, it's not a choice of which gray level, but all gray levels.
I, um, I'm just thrilled that, um, that you came up with three. I, after hearing the conversation from the last meeting on YouTube, uh, I, I wasn't sure what to expect and, and, um, I know there was a discussion about whether to have a semester, which I don't want at all, and I think that's where it's checking a box. And it was obvious to me that nothing in here was checking a box. And, um, and that if you have all these different options, it will be hard to escape. I mean, you know, really, and then build on it. And so, um, if, if we do agree to all three of them, that's a beginning. Is that how you're kind of, and, um, and there, and some of them are integrated. And so you're going to have them in a required class, but then also have it as an elective, have it dynamic. I'm just, your thoughtfulness on it, you're, um, I'm just, um, I'm hoping it will happen and I, I'm, I'm, as far as I can see, you're going to have at least a ninth grade, if we pass it, sorry. We'll have a ninth grade and, uh, and then an eleven, twelve, and an eleven. So that's a good start. But I agree to just have it everywhere. She has something to say. No? Were you talking about the, the eleventh, twelfth as?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joanna. Oh, I am sorry. I'll go.
I was just curious, um, are the integrated courses, because I think those are a great way to put the idea of ethnic studies in while people are still, like students are still maturing. So that way, when you hit them with the full course, they can fully appreciate it for what it is. Is the integrated course especially for like freshman English? Is that an option that students can like choose to? Or is that the required, that's the only option there is to take for freshman English?
So we did talk about that. Um, it's unclear, partially because if we do go forward with the grant, how some of the classes will do the CSU ERWC program, some won't. But we are, and I can't speak for the entire English department, so sorry, Petaluma High English Department, who's listening. Uh, but we are like hoping that this is something that would just be integrated in. So at least for English, it would just be the understanding that this is part of our English nine curriculum. The additional concern there is then what happens to honors and AP classes? And so that would be an additional conversation for, again, making sure that people can't like dodge out of it. But making sure, yeah, that this is just what we teach here and you're like, we want you to learn this.
Okay, my question was, the eleventh, twelfth grade year long course would be a requirement or an elective?
We're going for a requirement.
We're going for, yeah, I was going to say, I was like elective and I got kind of nervous, but no. We, we want it to be a requirement. Um, so again, getting that ninth grade curriculum, getting them like aware of these topics with the books that we would read in English nine, and then having eleven, twelfth be required, like follow through with what we learned in English nine. I mean, honestly, hopefully.
Oh, but starting this next year.
But that would be our decision.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And starting.
Ellen, that would be our decision. Any three of those classes would meet the state requirement. And, but not, it's not a graduation requirement yet.
So I think when we use the word requirement, right, differentiating between next year's requirement, which is just to offer versus a graduation requirement. So I, again, I think in terms of the graduation requirement, the committee needs more time to come up with a formal recommendation to you as to which classes should, should meet that requirement. You can see what, what the, where the leaning is in terms of that.
I'm all for a requirement. I love a requirement. Um, so I was in the cemetery again yesterday, you know, it's my favorite place in Petaluma at this point. Um, and I was with, um, one of our librarians. She's actually the SCO librarian Connie Williams, but she also works for the library, Maddie's good friend Connie. And she had shared, and of course I forgot the name, but it's like this resource through the library where, I'm sure you guys know about it, and apparently your librarians do know, where she can help create lessons with primary source documents and all these things. So she had mentioned that. Sounds like Jesse, you're nodding your head. So you know all about it. Um, so be, besides that, like curriculum development, um, and the SCO trainings. Do you have any other trainings in mind, um, that sound good to you or that you're pursuing?
We, I, we've talked about if it could possibly be offered on one of our PD days, our professional development days. Um, because again, we want to offer it to as many people, whoever wants to take it, we want them to be trained in it, because eventually we want everyone to have it somewhere in their curriculum. But we, again, we've had two days, so we haven't fully pursued. Um, I have reached out to a couple, uh, districts nearby that have ethnic studies and have been getting some help from them and some advice. So we'll get back to you on that one.
Thank you for doing this. I'm really impressed that what you got done in two days. That's amazing.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Do you have any comments or questions?
It's actually, speaking of, I'm just going to call you out here. Uh, hi Olivia. Uh, we do, we're talking about getting, um, student feedback as well before we officially move forward with like curriculum and things. This was, uh, again, advice given to me by a teacher in Windsor, I believe, um, about forming, like, asking people on, students on campus from a variety of backgrounds and, and ethnicities, like what do you want to see in these classes? What is it that would be helpful? And so you're on my, my shortlist of people to talk to, to help me bring people in. But we do, like, we, to this point, like, this committee really did care. And we have been, again, two days of not really fighting, but like sussing out exactly what it is, like what can we do? And then, uh, and shout out to Gloria, mentioning like, okay, cool, as we get this plan, what's next year's plan? What's the following? Like, what is our schedule? How do we get to a more robust offering?
I just want to add that.
Get to the mic.
Yes, you do.
Uh, I am taking the, uh, training through SCO, and I'm super excited about it. And in that process, I was, and then coming to the committee, I can say that we are right in line with what the county is looking to do. The county wants standalone classes. They're encouraging that. Um, and they, um, want to offer, offer as many classes to as many age groups and grade groups as possible. So it was really, um, wonderful to go to that training and come to the committee meeting and know that PCS and SCO are like on the same wavelength in terms of what we want to offer to our students, both here in the city and in the county. So we can rely on, uh, we can collaborate with them and with their resources. And they're excited to work with us as well as we continue to build.
Yeah, shout out to SCO. Well, in, in Zynga Woods, she's amazing. She's wonderful. She, yeah, I'm glad you're working.
Thank you very much for the report. Thank you. Okay, we are on item number nine. Need a break? Okay, let's take a three minute break. All right, three minute break.
We're losing people.
We are on item nine, comments from the public on special recognition reports, presentations, and non-agenda, non-agendized items. If you have any public comments to make on any of those items, please fill out one of these, um, sheets and, and bring them up here. No one else? Okay, so we have one speaker, Molly. Uh, you're, you're up and you got four minutes.
Um, thank you all. You guys do this a lot, staying late, so thank you. Um, my name is Molly Lunibus. I teach art at Casa Grande High School. I'm here to address a mistake made by Petaluma City Schools. Last spring, PCS mistakenly removed secondary visual and performing arts, VAPA, from decades-long parcel tax funding of Measure C, oftentimes referred to as Measure K, its original name from two thousand and four. This parcel tax provides funding security in perpetuity for library, technology, and the arts. One of Measure C's main tenants is to quote, "maintain music and the fine arts." And by the way, Ellen, I have the original voter pamphlets that I can provide you later. Um, removing VAPA from this parcel tax funding eliminates this core tenant and reverses over twenty years of precedence of VAPA support voted for by the taxpayers of Petaluma. This is illegal. We were blindsided by the mysterious disappearance of our allocated funds. The impact of this oversight has led to project delays, insufficient materials, curriculum downgrades, and ultimately, many frustrated and disappointed students. Eventually, this would lead to program cuts. I look forward to the immediate resolve of this mistake, especially ahead of the November election, where we have two much needed bomb measures on the ballot. Returning VAPA to the protective funding of Measure C reassures the people of Petaluma that their vote counts and that PCS can be trusted with their hard earned money. Thank you in advance for your attention to this consequential mistake and its prompt resolution. Good night.
Thank you, Molly. Okay, we are on item ten, adoption approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda.
I second.
Uh, any, any changes to it? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. Um, item eleven, re- Um, item 11, report on activities and correspondence of board members. I don't have Caitlin's list, so we'll just go down the aisle. If anybody wants to share anything from their activities of the last couple of weeks, please do so. Joanna?
Ava's not here, but she was homecoming queen. So we all acknowledge that. So she was definitely the homecoming game. Um, what did I do? Just, um, kind of worth basketball. And, um, the seventh grade world, world history play that Mr. Caldwell does every year. What was it for me? Ellen? Your microphone.
I just was at a lot of committee meetings.
Uh, Maddie, anything you want to share?
Yeah, so I was at the Climate Action Committee meeting and, um, I met with one of our students of the month, uh, Pranav Krishna for, um, starting up the academic decathlon again. I guess I thought I might want to be an advisor, but anyway, we, we, we are, we are working on it. Um, and, uh, then the, uh, Continuous Improvement Committee, but I did want to comment on the climate action.
Go ahead.
Um, we had a wonderful presentation by one of our own, um, MFTs, um, Caitlin Severin. Uh, I think she's at CASA. And, um, she was talking about how much climate anxiety is impacting our students. Not only, well, particularly in their mental health and also in their academic performance. Um, she had, um, 45% of youth say that climate-related stress affects their daily lives. 59% are very or extremely worried about climate change. And 75%, 75% believe their future is frightening. And, uh, she had just, uh, she just had a wonderful presentation. And so I just want to bring this up because I'd like, first of all, um, to have climate anxiety questions be put on our, uh, youth truth and our pulse surveys, because we don't have any data. And so if we can have some kind of, try to start collecting how much climate anxiety is impacting our kids. Uh, first of all, their mental health and then possibly how that is impacting their academic performance. And, uh, and along with that, we're, the resolution is coming. But it, it's going to be much more comprehensive and it's going to include comprehensive policy. Uh, and, um, kind of, um, around climate action and environmental literacy. So it was a really great meeting. Thank you, Dan.
All right, thank you. Uh, our student board members aren't here. And so we'll skip item 12 onto item 13, comments from the public on consent items. If there's anybody who would like to say anything on our consent agenda, which is item 14, raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 14, approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Hey, uh, any questions, comments on the consent agenda? It's pretty short.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Item 15, comments from the public on action items. If you have any comments on the several action items under item 16, now's the time to let us know. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the action items. 16.1.1 Resolution 2425-14, declaring November as Native American Heritage Month. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
I second.
Um, any, um, comments or is there anybody who would like to, uh, read this into the record?
I will.
Please do. Maddie?
A resolution of the Board of Education of Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts, declaring November as Ni- Native American Heritage Month. Whereas from generation to generation, Native Americans handed down invaluable cultural knowledge and rich traditions which continue to thrive in Native American communities across our nation today. And whereas since the earliest days of our republic, Native Americans have played a vital role in our country's freedom and security, having served in all branches of the Americas Armed Forces. And whereas Native Americans are leaders in every aspect of our society, from the classroom to the boardroom, from academia to the military. And whereas Native Americans make up the ranks of both our district-certificated and classified staff as well as our student population. And whereas Native American and Alaska Native tribal governments are an integral part of social, political and economic fabric of the United States. And whereas tribal America has brought to this great country certain values and ideas that have become ingrained in the American spirit. The knowledge that humans can thrive and prosper without destroying the natural environment. The understanding that people from different backgrounds, cultures, religions and traditions can come together to build a great country. And the awareness that diversity can be the source of strength rather than division. And whereas while we pay tribute to Native American achievements, we must also acknowledge the parts of our shared history that have been marred by violence and tragic mistreatment. And whereas for centuries, Native Americans face cruelty, injustice and broken promises. And whereas our tribal communities face stark realities, including disproportionately high rates of poverty, unemployment, crime and disease. And whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education recognizes that each student's needs and appro, and opportu, each student needs an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own identity and heritage and to understand respect and accept the identity and heritage of others. And whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education is committed to enhancing equity, inclusion, diversity and partnership, and remains dedicated to providing schools and districts with resources and supports to implement the history, social science standards and civic engagement and promote understanding of economics, geography, world and US history and government in schools. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education proclaims the month of November as Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you, Maddie. Any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're on item 16.1.2, approval of the variable term waiver request for dual immersion language teacher. Abigail Eliz, Eliza Razaz. Uh, do I have a, uh, a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
I second.
Jason, do you want to give us an introduction to this, please?
Yeah, this is, uh, one of our teachers that is, uh, an intern. She is also working on her bilingual authorization. Uh, you know, I think it says in this one, she is, needs to, um, to complete the exam. So she is, we need this to have her still compliant and being able to teach in the classroom that she's placed in.
Jason, how is this different from a PIP?
Um, the, it's a great question, Ellen. So, um, this one is, she's an intern, so she's in an intern program. And my understanding is the variable term waiver also has to do with it. She's also bilingual, we're looking for bilingual authorization. So she's in an intern program and she's requiring bilingual authorization and she's working on the exam. Whereas a lot of times we would be, it would be doing like an intern permit, something like that. So I think the, this one and the next one is a little different, but they both have to do with, these are both bilingual teachers that were looking for that authorization.
Any other questions? Yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, 16.1.3, second approval, I mean, second, uh, variable term waiver request of dual immersion language. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Any questions on this? This, I presume this is the second person saying this.
It's similar, that just as a side note, this, this person Nico, um, does have her credentials. She doesn't have her bilingual authorization. She was in our residency program last year at McDowell. So this is one of our, like, first fruits of that program of somebody that we're hiring in. Yeah, so it is wonderful.
Good.
Great. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 16.1.4, let's look at four, five and six together, because they kind of come as a set. Um, second reading and approval of amended board policy 0000 on vision, 0100 on philosophy and 0200 on goals for the school district. And I have a motion to approve those three together.
I move to approve those three together.
I second.
Okay, um, do we need a, a introduction to this? Uh, maybe Esmeralda?
We previously brought this policies to you and my understanding is that the board, uh, was part of making the revisions to those policies.
Yeah, apparently we have been operating under this vision, philosophy and goals without policy approval all these years. So it's good we get it straight before, you know, before it's too late. Um, any questions or comments? I mean, the, these are exactly what we've been operating under for the time that we've been aboard. We just haven't put it into policy. Now it's for a line. Okay, good. Seeing no comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm 16.1.7, second reading and approval of amended board policy 0410 on non-discrimination in district programs and activities. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Okay, so this is, uh, would this be Esmeralda or, uh, who?
Jason, I know that in your absence, I believe I brought that last board meeting or one of the board meetings.
Yeah, this is a second reading. We saw it a couple of weeks, a couple of board meetings ago.
So is there, does anyone have any questions or final edits or anything, uh, on this board policy? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm 16.2, Business Services, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for Measures E and C and Annual Board, annual report to the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to accept?
I move to accept the Oversight Committee's report.
I second.
Uh, Amanda, we've already heard the, your presentation. Anything to add to this? I mean, this is where we have the actual report, report.
Yes, we have Chair Karen.
Wonderful.
Both with us. Yeah, Karen Wonderful with us. I know.
Um, and I appreciate, it's a son, this is on, okay. Um, so I appreciate what Amanda did earlier, which is kind of give the context and the background for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Um, I'm the chair, uh, I'm involved with this for a whole three months so far, so I don't have a vast history. Um, but there are some of the members who have served on multiple committees before. Um, we have Michael Webb and the vice chair is Phoebe Ellis, so she's got a longer history than myself. As well as, um, Josh Grove and Bailey Malone are the current members. And then there's two vacancies that was mentioned earlier. So if you know of anybody, you know, that represents either the tax organization or a high school site council representative, um, or has kids in the district. Um, it'd be great to fill out that committee. We met three times, uh, since we were appointed in June, we met in July on the 10th, August 14th and September 18th in an effort to review the documentation that was generated and then, um, get it before the, the, the board here. So, um, here we are in October and I'm glad it's in front of you all, um, to approve. Um, when we met, Amanda was present as the chief business officer. And then we had usually the, um, construction manager who was able to answer our questions. So we had pretty good participation. Um, we didn't have anybody from the board directly or the superintendent, um, participate, but we were able to get most of our questions answered. Um, there's some lingering details. Um, our, our charge was to look specifically at fiscal year 2223. And so that was our primary focus, but I think, uh, for the benefit of the public and for future boards going forward, we've had some discussion with Amanda on making, uh, it a little more transparent on the website. What schools have benefited from the grant or the, the bond funds over time and to what dollar amount and what kind of improvements have been made over the years. Uh, some of that's covered in the report, but it's not granular enough to get to the dollar amounts, right? Um, so let's just talk about, it, it's referred to as Measure E and C. So E is the elementary bond and then C is the, um, secondary, uh, high school bonds, middle, middle school and high school bonds. Um, what we saw for 2223 is the Measure E elementary bond expenditures were about $2.1 million with a budget that was planned for those particular projects of 4.7. So there was about 43% of the budget was expended in 2223 fiscal year. Um, that was spent on three schools. Uh, the schools were Grant, McDowell and Pengrove. Uh, Pengrove had 95%, almost 96% of that spent. And that was on total, um, that was on projects that materially improved the infrastructure of Pengrove Elementary. So there was an investment in a new, a new six classroom building and, uh, temporary portable classrooms. And some of that was going to carry over then into 20, uh, 2324, okay? Um, the other two schools, Grant and McDowell, pretty much got, uh, somewhat deferred maintenance type investments on, um, roofing, exterior paint and some investment in the multi, uh, and kitchen for one of the schools. Um, it seems like from what we can see, every year, there's going to be kind of the major projects that get the bulk of the funding and then some smaller miscellaneous projects on the side. Um, for that particular bond, uh, the, the Measure E bond, um, the administrative, well, I should say, construction manager salary and benefits, the bond audit and the bank bond issuance fees totaled about 5.6% of what was funded. Okay, what was, what was expended, I should say, and that was $115,438. Um, those, uh, the NIGRO, NIGRO report, uh, documented that those expenditures for the construction manager and the other fees were compliant with the regulations around the bond. Okay, um, for Measure C, which is the, uh, middle school and high school, um, programs or bond, um, there were five schools that received funding expended in 2223. Um, out of a budget of seven million, about four million was spent. And so that was about 56% of what was authorized, right? So the rest will carry over, we think, to 2324. Um, the bulk of those funds were spent on Casa Grande with a battery system, underground gas line, emergency replacement, um, and building HVAC, restroom ADA, paint and other HVAC. So again, nothing that's going to, um, specifically address, uh, class size reduction or a, a capital, like a true capital change or improvement in function for students to the school other than maintaining air conditioning and maintaining the, the integrity of the building overall. Um, CASA received, uh, they spent 2.6 million out of the 3.9 that year on, on the CASA, on the CASA improvements. Um, Petaluma Junior High got battery backup for just under a million dollars. And then, um, Petaluma High School and Kennelworth and, uh, uh, they had, they had sub 100,000 to sub $20,000 investments, okay? So we're looking at, uh, CASA getting about 66%. Petaluma Junior High and Kennelworth Junior High getting around 15 to 20% and then the others were under 1%. Um, but again, the, the NIGRO, NIGRO report, the auditors found that the construction manager salary benefits, bond audit and bank bond issuance fees totaled around 183,000 or about four and a half percent of the total expended, funded, uh, expenditures in 2223 and that they were qualified and compliant. So from the standpoint of the Citizen Oversight Committee, Citizen Bond Oversight Committee, um, you know, we concurred with the findings of NIGRO, NIGRO. We were able to at least see, um, spreadsheets that documented kind of the work that was completed. We didn't go to the schools and take a look at some of the improvements. spreadsheets that documented kind of the work that was completed. We didn't go to the schools and take a look at some of the improvements, but you can see them when you're driving by uh Pen Grove Elementary School. It's very transparent. Um, what's been going on there, for example? One thing that, that, so as a conclusion for that, the Bond Citizens Oversight Committee found that the school district is in compliance with the requirements of Paragraph Three of Subdivision B of Section One of Article Thirteen A of the California Constitution for Fiscal Year Twenty-Two, Two, Three. The committee does want to share some comments though on what we're seeing just generally because these bond funds were approved in twenty-fourteen and here we are ten years later. And we also have another really important bond initiative on the ballot. So um, you know, like I mentioned, we don't have a transparent view. We're focused on one year at a time as we do these audits. And so uh Amanda and the, and the committee discussed uh to make this more transparent for the public to um upload to the website under the bond page, a listing by school, you know, of, of what projects were completed, what was the total investment and what was the year that the work was completed. So people can understand kind of the scope of what are the overall benefits that they received, right? On the flip side of that, you know, it does appear that um you know, that the Oversight Committee is a little concerned about the intensity of the spend just on deferred maintenance versus getting a real capital improvement that the community and the schools can get behind, right? Um, so it's great to hear that there's going to be this facility master plan released in first quarter next year. And I think that will help gel up uh public input and understanding of, of what the next bond funds can be used for and, and why, right? I think there's a little bit of lacking of understanding of what they got um with the money that we have so far. But it's super important because what's happening, I think, with our schools is a lot of people look at Casa. My, my daughter's a ninth grader there. And they say it looks exactly like it was when it was built, when they went there thirty years ago. And um, I think if you see declining enrollment, it becomes like a self fulfilling prophecy. If you're not investing and you don't have that vision of what the next twenty or thirty years looks like for our school district. You know, people are going to look for other opportunities, right? Whether it's a different charter school in a different district or if they can afford it, private school or they go down to San Marin in Nevada for STEM investment um and education. So um, that's one thing that we would love to see more is that long range plan, right? The Facility Master Plan and the capital improvements that come out of it rather than, you know, just fixing what we've got. On a final note on that, um, we've heard a lot about the Performing Arts Center being on the twenty-fourteen, you know, bond project list and now appearing again on the twenty-twenty-four bond project list. And there's a lot of feedback in the community that um, yeah, it would be great to have a community engagement place where students can perform, you know, whether it's theater or uh, you know, concerts. And everybody can come together in a single building, single room to be able to uh listen to their students apply the skills that they've learned in the district, right? Instead of um, for example, at a lot of schools, you can't get the full student body in a multi anymore, right? Or they're playing in um portables, which the acoustic is quality is just horrible in that case. So um, where I was raised in the Midwest, you know, we had actual theaters and it would be nice to see some of that uh come back to the community here with some of these bond investments. Um, and in short, you know, investing in our school and our children and our community are essential for this sort of sustainable, desirable and competitive school district, right? That attracts and retains not only families, but the teachers too. I think the teachers come in and they, they find some of the conditions can be pretty challenging here because of the age of the infrastructure. So um, I think we look forward to serving on a two-year term now. So we're hoping for a little bit more continuity. And if you guys have any questions, um, let me know.
Thank you for that report. Uh, questions? Uh, sorry, is it Karen or?
Yeah.
Thanks for the report and thank you for serving on this committee. Questions for Karen?
Um, I just have a question about, um, you know, I kind of looked at the list. And, you know, several of them, of course, have been on for ten years. But um, I did notice that um, you know, there are things that we um are looking at for like kitchen improvements and grandstands, uh, a variety and of course the Performing Arts Center, which of course is not listed. But um, I was just wondering how it works in with the, if we do pass the bonds in um, in November, if these will just remake, I mean, how, how do they merge together? Do we just wait until the facilities um master plan comes through and then we can't mix or prioritize using both bonds? How does that work?
So the list on this report is specific to the current bond.
Right.
Yeah. So then what we will do is um, we will work on combining um through resolution and then this list will kind of morph into the facilities master plan and the overall program. Um, and then the current um CBOC will continue to audit um all of the bond funds. It just makes the tracking um on the projects a little bit easier to do it that way. Um, the big picture.
Thank you. Yeah. Oh yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Let's see, we have a motion on the table um to accept this report. All those in favor say aye. Uh, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are on item sixteen point one point, no, sixteen point four point one, second reading of policy five, one, four, five point seven, sex discrimination and sex based harassment. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
I second.
Esmeralda, do you want to introduce this uh to us on second reading?
Yes. So this was just um some updates to Title Nine that came through in July one, twenty twenty-four. We brought this amended policy not too long ago, but we wanted to make sure that uh all of the terminology was consistent with CSBA recommendations and, and federal law.
Great. Any questions for Esmeralda? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, item seventeen, comments from the public on discussion items. If there's anybody who would like to speak on the three things that are on our discussion items. These are food services, graduation requirements or ethnic studies. Raise your hand. Okay, then we will move on to item eighteen point two point one, first reading of a, a board policy and administrative uh reg for food services, operations and cafeteria fund. Who's introducing this? Amanda?
All right. Thank you. Tonight we bring forth the first read for both the board policy and administrative regulations for uh policy three, five, five, one. Um, this is an updated policy for changes in the law. The specific language is on the meal sales. Each school day nutritionally at a quick breakfast and lunch shall be made available at no cost to any student who requests a meal. Um, this just updates that language for the universal meals.
Yeah, love it. Any questions, concerns, comments or any direction for Amanda from board members? Sounds good. Item eighteen point three point one, uh, discussion of uh graduation requirements, board policy six, one, four, six point one. We heard kind of a discussion or, or presentation already. I want to ask the committee to um calculate the required units, credits. I'm pretty sure we're five off. I, I kept on going over this ten times and I can only get to two fifteen. Um, so please uh check on that. Any other, any additional discussions? We already had one earlier, but any further discussion on this?
Just concerned about the thirty year math. That's the main. I like that we're adding in the VAPA requirement because it should have been there anyway.
Yeah.
The one year and the two years of language other than English is great too. And I know that if we do those, then the thirty year math will be the only thing holding us back from being A through G. But I do still have some concerns, so.
Could, could I uh get clarification on the issue of math? You know, the three years, is it three years of mathematics or math three, getting to math three? Okay, so it doesn't have to be uh A through G compliant necessarily. It's three years of mathematics. I know, I know, but it doesn't have to be.
But everything's A through G now, right?
Yeah.
All the classes.
Yeah.
I think you can do like computer science can count your math.
Yeah.
That's what Dan was speaking.
Yeah, and actually there's quite a bit of opening up from the state. Some updates are coming in November currently too. So data science, computer science, um, with some, you know, caveat there has to still include a fair number of standards and things, but um, it's, it's broadening, it's opening up and then a category that's called additional math, which is GBB. So it's in development and I think that's an exciting piece. I think to speak to the concern, I, I totally hear you and I think, you know, our system of common assessment that we've been working towards could and should help inform placement, where you mentioned all of that um, as a robust system of support for all of our students. Um, in addition to other targeted pieces that our school sites have specifically written to their uh SIPSA and other pieces to support students along the way.
I just think that before we make that decision, we should make sure that the supports are in place. Good supports are in place for math before we decide to add another year.
It's where you start, right? Because if we, if we're putting supports in place, like what are we putting in, in for? What, what are we putting in place for, right? So we need to have what the expectation is. This is where we want students to get. I mean, these are, these are those supports. That being said, we also have supports in place. So when we come back at the next reading, we can share. We'll have an opportunity again, right, for a second reading? So then we can come with more detailed uh report on what is already in the LCAP and the SIPSA's in terms of um, in terms of math support and then some additional plans about, you know, the HHS was talking about during the Saturday Academy. So things like that, if there's other things that are being talked about right now, we can present that more.
Can you um use the advisory as a uh as kind of like a, a mentoring or a tutoring for those students that, I mean, uh, you know, kind of organize the advisory so that if a student needs those supports, that's a period during the day, um, school day. I don't know. It's just a idea.
I, I would like to ask the committee to give us their recommendations or options for um minimum credits required for graduation under a seven period model. You know, out of, because currently it's two twenty out of two forty possible. You know, and now we're going to have two eighty possible. What should be that number? And presumably whatever that number is, the, the gap is electives, which is wonderful. That's what we, that's what we would want. Um, but, but I'd like your recommendation, you know, keeping in mind we want our students to be there their senior year. And um, but uh, yeah, you know what the issues are. Any other um comments or discussion or direction for the committee?
I was going to say for future business, but since you asked something of the committee, I will too. Um, I would want to know how many students are failing math one and math two right now? Just so we have an idea of the need as we're looking at adding either math three or data science or computer science.
Hey, any others? All right, then we can move on to um the next item, which is the first reading on the new course proposals for ethnic studies. We already had the presentation and some discussion. Any further discussion or direction for the committee?
I think just reiterating the ninth grade.
Yes, totally. Uh, I would, I totally agree. We need the ninth grade option. Yeah, that, you know, I, I think the committee um, you know, even the committee expressed this is the beginning and that's how I see it is if we can get just this done, it's amazing progress and progress. More progress than I've seen in my entire public education experience. And so I'm super excited and I know it's going to go further, but let's get this going. Any others? All right. Uh, we are on to future business. Anyone have any uh I agenda items that they want to uh have addressed?
I know you guys miss me. Of course I do. I only, I, I just have, I request um that uh summaries of all agenda items uh in the content section of the agenda um come back. Um, I don't know when it got lost, but under the content section, you usually have the situation, the plan and then who submitted it. And a lot of times there's nothing there. And um, it's, it's just, it really at least gives me a disadvantage. Um, also, if you can attach presentations, I know you're on a tight uh timeframe, but if you can uh, uh, attach the presentations to the agenda items for the same reason. Um, it's really hard for me to process a lot of information, obviously. And uh, without having anything ahead of time. Um, and then the only other thing is that uh trees, um, I, I know we all know what I'm talking about, but I'm, I, I'm just kind of like, um, I just need kind of some clarification eventually on why this project at Grant was um, was stopped. And uh also just kind of going forward. Um, when I was thinking about this, think about the business office and the Environmental Literacy and Climate Action Committee coordinating efforts. Because we've been talking a lot about shade and, and creating uh environments on our campuses, hopefully with new bong monies, but with whatever we can. I mean, relief is one of our big um supporters and um community supporters. And so um, I don't know, we're working on this revision of the board resolution from twenty-twenty-one and it is going to be expanded into more policy along with the resolution and policy initiatives. We're also working with the city on their climate initiatives. And so um, to be able to coordinate all those efforts, you know, because they have, uh, they, they have a shade audit, you know, thing that they're going to try to do also. So um, you know, the more trees, the better. I mean, I can't tell you how many articles I've received recently about the importance of trees and reducing the heat. Um, and you know, we're obviously getting hundred and five degree temps at least a couple of times a year. So, and our kids just, and we don't have air conditioning in some of our, our school sites. So it just, you know, to be able to have some real shade canopy and it's a pretty uh, low cost answer. So certainly lower costs than air conditioning. So anyway, that's, that's it for me.
Anyone else?
Well, the transportation policy, as Joanna mentioned, we need, we need some AR on that.
Is it? It, it will be brought to you uh the November board meeting.
Perfect.
The first reading, correct? First reading? For the AR?
Sure, yes. Um, often we bring ARs just for approval, but first reading is perfect. But yeah, so we are still, we met with the comprehensive high schools, but I, was my understanding, there was, you also wanted me to do some research on what other districts are doing and costs. So we're working on that piece of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, uh, that's the end of our meeting. We are adjourning at nine fifty.